Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I hope you all had a wonderful Labor Day weekend. Ready to get back to work, so I would like to call to order the amended Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting for September 3rd, 2019. Kathleen, could we get a roll call?
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Marks? Commissioner Maza?
Here.
Vice Chair Jennings?
Chair Yaring?
Here.
You have a quorum with Commissioner Marks absent.
Thank you. Commissioner Marks will be not joining us tonight. He got caught in traffic coming back from vacation, so he was not able to make it. Okay, Pledge of Allegiance. Dennis, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, and just for all.
Dennis, thank you very much. Could we get an approval of the agenda, please?
I move the agenda as staff recommends with Item 4C continued to September 16th.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Report on posting the agenda, Kathleen.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on August 23rd, 2019, with the amended agenda posted on August 27th, 2019.
Thank you very, very much. We're going to begin this evening with a little update on the Woolsey Fire. You're on.
Good evening, Chair Yaring and members of the Planning Commission. I am providing you with the Fire Rebuild update tonight in Richard's absence. He is enjoying some much-needed vacation time in Hawaii. As of this afternoon, we have approved 50 like-for-like rebuilds, a total of 68 like-for-like plus 10 percent, and 12 major changes to a resident for those that do not qualify for the two aforementioned. Currently to date, we have 18 projects still under planning review and over 130 that have been or at 130 that have been approved by the Planning Department. As Richard mentioned last week, it went through all the fee waiver information. Wanted to provide you an update on the total amount of fees waived to date. The total amount is $431,854.80 are the fees that have been waived to date, and those include both planning fees, building and safety, and all various department fees as well for those projects that qualify for like-for-like rebuilds or rebuilds plus 10 We've had 15 building permits issued. That is one more from last week's update, and still zero homes to have been completed. And we just have a few photos of the first framing of the first home to have been rebuilt from the Woolsey Fire. We'll hopefully have a video for you guys next week showing a cool time lapse of those of the house being framed. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
And then also, Commissioner Yaring, you had asked, you'd been curious about the square footage, and we are going to be tracking that, and we'll have an update on that, too.
Questions, Commissioners? Anybody? Nothing? 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 All right. I have one quick one. Has the, well, I guess we have the weekend, and this may not be a good question, but have we seen a steady, a steady flow of people coming in for permits? Has it speeded up, slowed down at all, any perceptive or anything you've noticed?
I would say it's been pretty consistent. As Richard mentioned, we had a little bit of a slowing towards the end of July, early August, but since then, I think we've been receiving consistent amounts of projects for intake.
Excellent. Thank you very, very much. You guys have done a great job. All right, let's go on to oral and written communication from the public. Anybody want to talk to us this evening? That'd be a quick meeting. All right. Moving right along. Planning Commissioner comments. Jeff? Craig?
I just had a quick question. We got one communication from the public talking about how the city's notice of final local action to the Coastal Commission differed from the resolution, and I didn't have time to look closely at that, but I wondered if the notice to the Coastal Commission is something we might want to be seeing sometimes ourselves, too. And is there any, do you have any comment on what that was about?
The, we did discover an error in the, we call it a NOFA, Notice of Final Action, Notice of Final Local Action. We noticed an error in the NOFA in terms of the indication whether it was appealable or not, and we had incorrectly stated that it was not appealable, and it actually is. So we sent on an updated version that had that correctly stated.
Was some suggestion that the conditions that we had put on the staff's recommendation weren't incorporated into that, or was that?
I'm not sure what the whole concern is there. The, the resolution that is being prepared or has been prepared for Chair Yaring's signature reflects the changes that the Commission directed as far as the entirety of the yard and, you know, all those things. And so the adopt, the resolution was adopted with those changes, and so that's been prepared, and that's, you know, our normal process that we always use for resolutions unless you adopt it just exactly as staff has presented it to you. So in this case, it was adopted with changes, and those are reflected in the updated resolution.
So from your perspective, everything is as it should be, and we have a question mark hanging out as to what that?
At this time, I'm not aware of a, of a problem with the document. I mean, if, I can't say that it's, that I'm certain that it's perfect, but if anybody finds an, an error that needs to be addressed, I will, of course, do that.
Jeff?
I guess the question might be when, when we notify the Coastal Commission of having taken final action, does a copy of the resolution go along with that notice, or is it?
Yes.
Okay.
It does, and it goes in an unsigned form if it hasn't been signed yet.
And just, I mean, for anything that's complicated or other than like a new wastewater treatment system, I do try and go back to the meeting and listen to what the resolution was before I come in and sign it. So I'm trying to make sure that we're staying on track.
The, the appealability issue also is jurisdictional, whether it's appealable to the Commission or not, so if there's an error, it would have to be fixed. It's not a discretionary issue.
For Trevor. If, if the staff report or the report after it comes out and says it's not appealable and it is, how does the time run on that? It's already ran by the time they've done that. Does somebody have the right to appeal?
We'd have to take a look at the issue. If there was an error and that was the reason for having a, so if somebody appealed it to, we'd have 10 days basically to appeal this, so if they appealed it to the Council, but they wanted to appeal it to the Coastal Commission instead, then I guess you'd be able to put it to the Commission rather than be stuck with appealing it to the Council at that point if there was an error.
How would you know that it was appealable?
We needed to?
If you were an individual?
Well, it's in the codes, in the LCP, about, you know, which items are appealable to the Coastal Commission. So, and I can't remember when it runs from. I had to double-check about the date.
I'm sorry.
When the date for them to appeal to the Coastal Commission runs from. I think it's?
So it, the clock on that starts ticking when the Coastal Commission acknowledges receipt of the NOFA from the city. So it might sit in their mailbox for two days, but until they, you know, like date stamp it received, that's when they start the clock, and it runs for 10 business days, not calendar days.
Yeah. So, but if somebody was in the public and they got told in the staff report in the resolution that it wasn't appealable, how are they going to know they can appeal it?
It's always appealable to the City Council. It's just whether it's?
Yeah, any, anything that comes here is appealable to the City Council. If, it didn't happen in this case that there was any error in the staff report on that as far as the appealable nature of this project, but if that were to happen, we would just, we'd have to figure out when the error occurred.
Okay. Please, Commissioner comments?
Use the question.
Yeah, I had a, I had a individual call me, elderly lady, that asked me why she had to pay so much to get an ADU, and I told her that they don't exist. And so apparently she went in to, to get a small unit, put on a burnout, and paid a whole bunch of fees. I don't quite understand the whole thing, but where, where does it stand where we're going to adopt ADUs and you can go in and do it over the counter?
They can't be adopted over the counter unless it's, if it's something that burned and it's a like-for-like replacement, then it's treated like all of the planning verifications that we've been hearing about all along, and those fees are waived. If it's a brand-new second unit, then it would require a CDP, and if, if that's the only scope of development that's involved, then it is eligible for the statutory timeline of 120 days, I believe. So we would process that CDP in 120 days.
But what I'm asking is, we heard ADUs.
You heard an ordinance on ADUs back in September.
Right.
And it's coming back to you with the additional information and changes you requested.
Oh, so it comes back to us and then goes to the City Council?
Yes.
Okay.
But in the meantime, all of our existing regulations pertaining to second units and guest houses are still in effect, just like?
Oh, no, I understand that, but somebody can't take advantage of the non-CDP second unit.
You can't, our code doesn't allow, it's still going to be a CDP. It's just going to be a, an expedited CDP.
Okay. Let me stick with the ADUs for a second. I got, I got a call from an elderly lady who lives over in Big Rock. Her house burnt down, 93 rebuilt. She's 75 or something, so she wants to build a second unit so her family can move into the maintenance, she can live in the second one. Good idea. And she, and she's put like 50 grand into this. At least she thought she was building an ADU according to the state law, right? So she thought she was coming in, get it done real quickly. I think so far, she's been hit up for like 50,000 bucks for all sorts of stuff. And I'm just, I mean, do we tell people that this ADU thing is coming, so, you know, you may be better off sitting for a while as opposed to spending all that money and, I'm just, you know, just, she said, I don't know what the hell's going on.
Well, I don't, I'm not certain what fee reductions or waivers would be associated with this. That's not part of the statute as far as I'm aware. The streamlining in terms of permitting time and some relaxation of certain development standards is part of it, but?
It was like, I mean, she was saying 93, she was, your house burnt down, so she got a survey, rebuilt the house. They're making her go back and re-get another survey, and you say, wow.
I'm, I'm happy to, if you get, if you have?
I'll give you name, we'll take, yeah, let's take it.
It would be a lot easier for me to address it.
Because she's confused and I'm confused, so, okay.
Yeah.
All right, one last one. Southern California Edison. We spent, what, an hour, an hour and a half, whatever time for him going through Southern California Edison, and they left.
A lot longer than that.
And, and I talked to you a little bit, or I sent you an email, I guess, you know, why did they leave? And you said it was because the rent went up, the rent increase.
That, and that was secondhand from what the applicant told Justine and what Justine indicated to me, so if there was some other information that happened between the property owner and the applicant, I'm not aware of that.
Okay, so here's what I found. I mean, because I looked at it and said, you know, why would Bell kick him off the property and for no rent, when he's got rent coming in, he could keep it going for a while? I mean, he's, I mean, Bell's got money, but he's not stupid. He's not going to throw money out the door. So I called Southern California Edison. Called two people. I called Rudy, who was our contact. I called the other person back there, and both of them told me the main reason they left was because the city was not going to let them back on to the Chili Cook Off property or the Bell property until like the 18th of September. Okay? And then I called Dell, and I asked him if he raised the rent, and he said no. Okay? So, in fact, the, the reason why you're keeping him off the property till the 18th was because of the 24-day timeline for a temporary use permit? So the, the Planning Commission basically thought that keeping Southern California on the property and getting the repairs done was sort of a health and safety issue. You guys didn't think that, huh?
No, it's not that at all. It's that the, the code requires that the decision be, by the Planning Director or, but the decision be issued 24 days before the permit is issued. So that's why that, that timeframe is?
And, and I, you know, we're going to tread into grounds I may not want to go into. Whole Foods, their permit was generated 48 hours before the event. And Whole, and at least Southern California Edison was doing something to help harden the city and face the, the next fire. Whole Foods was having a party.
The, I don't know that we're going to resolve anything right this minute other than since the Whole Foods issue was brought up and all of the timelines included in the municipal code were brought up, we have, I've made a, a decision to stick to those per the code. Previously, we'd been flexible to try to allow people to get all their approvals in before we issued the actual permit rather than condition everything, but that's the reason for the change.
Okay. Strange. All right.
Well, can I ask a question?
One question to go to Bonnie.
We passed the resolutions and everything, and then they moved out a couple of days later, a week later, whatever. Are they still required to follow those?
Yes, the CDP runs with the land that's still in place.
So either Bell or them have to dig up all that gravel? Okay.
Yeah, all of the conditions as, as you put them in place are in effect, you know, pending whatever happens. The, the project was appealed to the Coastal Commission as of today, so it'll be in the Coastal Commission's hands shortly.
Okay, okay. Comments, Bonnie? Up to you.
I don't have anything for you tonight.
All right. Moving right along now. Let's go to the consent calendar. Anybody want to pull anything?
I'd like to pull 3B1.
That is the only thing on the consent calendar, so 3B1.
And before you spend a lot of time, this one is, seems very simple, but I looked at the size of the house, which is only 1,600 square feet, and the tank's 36, 34, which is, you know, what we ask for hotels. Why is it so big?
They also have a guest house on the property to the rear of the property, and believe it is serving the guest house as well.
But did anybody go through and ask why such a huge one? Or is this, my question is, is this part of, oh, what do you call it when they?
Piecemeal.
Piecemeal. Is there a mansion coming?
There was no other additional improvements proposed with the septic system, and the septic system at that size was improved by the Environmental Health Department.
How big is the guest house? Do you know?
I'll have to look at the plans if you just give me a moment.
Okay. And Norm, this is a question for you. Okay, if you, I could?
It says that the, the, the system will serve a four-bedroom, 34, actually, it might be 54, I forgot my glasses.
Yeah, it's a big?
And a one-bedroom guest house.
Can we take disclosures before we?
Any disclosures?
None.
None? None. Okay. Do you get a stipend every week to come and answer these questions that we ask you from the city? No?
I get the same stipend we get.
I'm doing some research, and one of the, on septic tanks, okay? I just want to know if you agree with this. What I read was, it says, "A small home will have a much lower amounts of waste in most cases, and if the system or components are too large, then your septic system may not be able to create the bacteria and the heat need to operate effectively." You agree with that?
No, I don't.
Okay.
The, the larger the tank, the longer the effluent stays in the tank, and that allows flocculation to occur. You want that effluent to be in the tank a certain amount of time, and, and then it will move into the aerobic stage, so that's?
You just don't, that's fine. I just, I, I read the internet and checked with an expert.
Let me make a point, just sort of anecdotally, because we had a couple of, of projects that have come forward recently, this meeting and the last, that had what seemed to me very large septic tanks. And it, it looks to me, just, just looking at the data that's in front of us, that these micro, what's the name of it? The microsept tanks tend to be on the order of 3,000 gallons. If you look at them, they're all roughly that size. The only other thing, I should disclose, that I talked to Bonnie about this and pointed out that, that on page three, on the, the condition number five, it says, "The applicant shall submit three open perimeter, four closed perimeter, complete sets of plans." So there's, so there's something in our, in our boilerplate that needs to be changed. But, but I, the point, the reason I make it, the point is that, that we're now in an age where everything is done digitally. We have to migrate to a system that allows electronic filing and, and do away with this, these multiple copies of, of papers that get stored everywhere and still managed to get lost, astonishingly. But we have to move to an electronic system. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jeff. Do you get a motion?
Do we open the public hearing if anyone wants to speak?
I'm sorry, did anybody want to speak on this issue? I'll open the public hearing and close it with no speakers. Get a motion?
Move staff's recommendation on 3B1.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Moving along. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to go to Item 4A, Coastal Development Permit Number 16038 and variance number 16017, 18045, and application for new single-family residence and associated development continued from August 20th, 2019, and this is for 21490 Paseo Portola Street. And we have some speakers, and we've got pictures. Any disclosures, please?
Yeah, I visited a second time, confirmed that the western slope appears to be one-to-one or even greater possibly, and noticed for the first time that pilings from the old foundation adjacent and on top of that western slope are now tipping slightly into that canyon, suggesting that there is movement more recent than, than a prehistoric, quote-unquote "prehistoric" slide might suggest. And also noticed that the nine-foot wall would be visible from the highway.
Anybody else?
Yes. When I read the staff, when I got a, I read the staff report, I saw a petition from the neighborhood, and since we'd heard it before, I thought we had discussed everything. So I called James Moore and asked him why the petition and why they didn't put any detail on it, and he agreed to expand on that, and that's why we got this email. Other than that, I did not discuss the project with him.
And I visited the project when he came forward the first time. I did not go back and do it this time. So Adrian, I think we're over to you.
Sorry, good evening, Chair Yaring and members of the Planning Commission. The project before you is one that was before you earlier this year in April. At the time, the Planning Commission continued the item to a date uncertain to give the applicant additional time to eliminate the variance that was requested at the time for a 40-foot lateral projection to be measured from the edge of the building instead of the edge of the street. The applicant has since revised the plans to comply with the lateral projection, and while doing so, the basement was entirely eliminated from the project at this time. During this time, it was also uncovered that a segment of the retaining wall to protect the septic system's microdose subsurface drip field exceeded the maximum height of six feet, and the variance that was previously being proposed for the 40-foot lateral was then applied to the nine-foot retaining wall. The variance previously, excuse me, the next line. The subject property is located at the cul-de-sac of Paseo Portola Street. The property is located within a developed residential neighborhood with a row of single-family residents between it and Pacific Coast Highway to the south. Due to the previous development, the building pad is relatively flat. However, beyond the building pad, the site is characterized by steep slopes that descend from Paseo Portola down towards Pacific Coast Highway. The subject property was disturbed in the past and contains remnants of the pre-existing residence that was destroyed in 1993 fire. The previous residence was constructed in 1962 and consisted of 2,000 square feet, two-story single-family residence with an attached garage. The proposed residence has been designed to remain predominantly within the previously disturbed building pad. The proposed project involves the construction of a new 3,397 square feet, two-story single-family that includes a, an attached two-car garage. Associated development consists of the construction of decks, driveway, and a pile-supported retaining wall to stabilize the hillside as well as to provide a two-to-one slope area for the septic system, dispersal area. The proposed project also includes two variances. One is requested for construction of a pile-supported retaining wall on slopes steeper than two-and-a-half to one, and the other for a segment of the retaining wall in excess of six feet but not to exceed nine feet in height. Notwithstanding the variances requested for this, for the slopes stability and septic system, the project complies with all applicable development and design standards of the La Costa Overlake District. After revising the project to eliminate the variance for lateral projection, the applicant revised the story poles and reinstalled them based on the new house design, and these photos represent the house after the design change was made. This morning, we received an email from Mr. James Moore, the neighbor immediately to the east. Mr. Moore objects to the two variances that are being proposed for, again, the retaining wall on steep slopes and in excess of six feet in height. However, as noted in the staff report, the project geotechnical consultant recommends a pile-supported retaining wall to help protect the subject property and the neighboring properties from slope failure by stabilizing the hillside. It was also recommended that a microdose subsurface drip field be used as a, on a maximum slope of two-to-one to achieve the maximum required factor of safety for the slope stability. The code does allow for reduced setbacks between structures and both the dispersal system and the septic system tanks. Provided a registered geologist states in writing that the stability of the slope will not be compromised by a reduced setback. In this case, we do have a letter from the project geotechnical consultant indicating that it is, that they don't believe that the proposed septic system and dispersal area will compromise the stability of the slope with the reduced setbacks. Regarding the letter from Mr. Borton Slaski, the project septic system designer, the absorption rate from all test pits were identified to be too high in order to comply with the city's required factor of safety, which is why the proposed dispersal system was designed to have less than one-tenth of the loading rate to meet the design factor of safety. That, you know, in summary, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopts Resolution Number 19-20, approving the proposed project as condition, and staff is available for any questions.
One quick one. The last statement you made, reduce the loading rate by, what does that mean?
That just means the effluent that will be generated as part of the septic system, that the amount of, I guess, liquid, if you want to call it that, generated from it will, will have only one-tenth of what the absorption rate would be on that slope.
Okay, thank you very much.
I should mention another disclosure. I did one, this one was, this was before us last time. I called Adrian and spoke to him about the fact that it, it looked to me as though the variance was being requested because we needed more space for the drip field, and then, and I was looking at the size of that tank again, and the, the size of the tank is about 3,000 gallons, and I was asking him? was asking him whether that wasn't oversized for the size of the house. He went down, checked with environmental health, and assured me that based on the size of the house, that that was an appropriate-sized tank, so I have to disclose that.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any questions? We got, I got the applicants and public speakers. One of you from them first?
Yeah, I have a couple of quick ones.
Okay, go ahead.
Adrian, several other houses we've done where there was a question of slope stability, namely the one at Latigo, we limited the amount of water they could use. Is there a maximum amount of dispersal that can be done on this hill? I mean, you say that you need a 3,000-gallon tank to churn it around, but could you dump a 3,000-gallon tank on that hill? Or could you take 10,000 gallons a day or whatever?
I think it's all based on the absorption rate on the slope. And again, the more, the more affluent you have, the less likely you are to exceed the one-tenth. And one-tenth is the number they came up with that they feel was necessary in order to meet the factor of safety required for the slope. And what is being proposed is way below the one-tenth maximum, so that's the threshold, I believe, you're asking about.
Yeah, I believe you just said the more water, the less it affects. Is it the other way around, isn't it?
The larger the dispersal area and the less you put in there, the better, of course.
Okay, and then the other question is, I think this was covered in the last staff report, but I couldn't find it. Is this house covered by the hillside ordinance?
This property is not, and that's because it's in the overlay district, and in the overlay district specifically states that the hillside standards, it's not applying.
Were the hillside standards in existence when they did the overlay district?
The overlay district was in existence.
So they amended it to say the hillside ordinance didn't cover it?
That would be correct. That would be correct. Well, at the time that the hillside ordinance was adopted, my guess is that it was also then that it was determined that it wouldn't apply to the overlay district.
So Trevor, would that be stated in the hillside ordinance?
Yes, I think-
Since it's not in the overlay district.
No, it, the, when the ordinance was adopted, it included language to address whether it would apply in this particular overlay district because it's so steep.
Yeah, I think we discussed it last time. Can we go through that?
Okay. Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, I'm still not clear what you mean in this case, that the loading rate would have to be one-tenth? I mean, that sounds like you're telling them they need to poop one-tenth as much as normal. What do you mean? How do you reduce that rate so much?
It's, the one-tenth is a formula that the engineers came up with, maybe we should ask them, but it's, what was determined is that the absorption rate on the property is one that if you just allow that, that you wouldn't be able to meet the factor of safety. So they came up with how much can it absorb and not, and still comply with the factor of safety, and it was determined that one-tenth was that number.
And they feel like they can meet that, you're saying?
They're exceeding that, yes. So they're in compliance with that number.
What about in the letter from Mr. Moore? He pointed out that John Yerslawski report from September 2017 pointed out that the dispersal field is required to be 15 feet from the wall, yet actually is only eight feet, and the treatment tank is required to be five feet from the structure, yet actually is only one foot four inches. What can you say about those numbers?
So I did bring that up in my presentation, and so what I said was that there are requirements in the Malibu Plumbing Code that have certain requirements about setbacks between structures and the dispersal field as well as structures and the septic system tank. However, there are some allowances in these codes that if they were to get a certified geologist to state in writing that a reduced setback will not compromise the slope stability, that that would also be acceptable. So in this case, there was a letter from the geologist indicating that the reduced setback was still acceptable.
Okay, and then I should disclose that you and I did speak briefly about this, and there was about the nine-foot retaining wall. And I pointed out that in the La Costa Overlay, there's a bit of code there that says, "Flat walls, facades along South Ocean-facing elevation shall not extend more than 25 feet horizontally, da-da-da-da, without a minimum four-foot offset," suggesting, and by my reading, if you assume, if you read that wall to be a flat wall facade, and I guess we could argue all night about what facade means, you'd have to, every 25 feet in that approximately 100-foot width, you'd have to stagger it by four feet. You suggested to me that that wouldn't be possible because that would then not allow enough space for the dispersal field. Do you have a clarification or any comment on that?
Yeah, so I didn't say it wasn't possible. What I did say, that the only way to achieve that would be to have a recess that will come further away from the house or further south down the slope, which would increase the height of the retaining wall. So in order to achieve that, you would need a higher retaining wall, but it is feasible. I'm sure the applicant can speak to this issue as well. However, it's staff's opinion that the section you're reading from is the section regarding TDSF, which is based on, you know, building, restricting building size. And so we do believe that that section is applicable to the building and not necessarily a freestanding wall, which is why we wouldn't apply it to the wall. But if the planning commission believes that it is, or should be applied to the wall, then we can talk to the applicant about doing that. But like I said, in doing so, you would end up with a slightly larger wall than the nine-foot retaining wall they're proposing.
All right, thank you. All right, I want to open up public comment. We've got the applicant, and let me just read off the names who are members of your team. You're going to get 15 minutes. So there's Richard Perrin. Jacob Holt.
Good evening. Oh, I'm sorry. You're reading them off.
Jacob Holt. You're okay? And Jose. And Carolina, Carolina. All right, very good. So you can, you guys have 15 minutes. You can reserve some time at the end for rebuttal after everybody else speaks, and there are going to be other speakers, okay? So we'd like to reserve some time. Any thoughts on that?
I will be brief.
Okay.
And I think my colleague will be brief at this point.
Okay, well, we'll see. If it gets too long, I'll just remind you in case you want to, again, have some rebuttal time. Go right ahead, sir.
All right, thank you very much. My name is Dick Perrin. I'm the owner of the property. I am a professor of economics in the University of Nebraska. I, why am I here in Malibu trying to build a house? Well, I'm approaching retirement age, and about six years ago, I contacted my brother-in-law, Jose, who is also the project director, to see if he could help me find a site and build a place that would be nice to spend some time in retirement. And within about a year, he found this lot, and I bought it. He said there'd be some, it's a difficult lot, but with some proper expertise, that we could build a nice place for us. So that's how this project started. We've been about six years trying to work out all the details, and as you know, we came to you in April with some plans that didn't meet, that didn't meet your approval, and we, as the planner has said, we've corrected those issues that you brought to our attention. And I hope that, we certainly, I will say that we certainly don't intend to make a mess of this part of Malibu because it's a beautiful place, and we want to build a beautiful house there that has all the features that the neighborhood would want, well, most of the features that the neighborhood would want. So I'm not an engineer. I'm, as I say, I'm an economist, so I don't have, and I'm certainly not a planner, so I don't know very much about variances and certainly don't know much about the planning rules in Malibu. So I will leave the technical details to the rest of my colleagues to bring forward, but I think we have, we've tried our best to meet your requests. We will continue to do so, and I hope we can get this house built before I have finished retiring. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Richard. Who would anybody else like, applicant team to speak? Yes. You're Mr. Holt. And the project geologist.
Good evening, commissioners. Jake Holt, Land Phase Incorporated out of Semin Valley. I'm the project geologist. I'm a certified geologist, certified engineering geologist, and a certified hydrogeologist. And just a few things, I'll be brief and save our time for rebuttal, and I'm available, obviously, for any questions when it goes to the counter there. So just to touch on a few things, you guys were discussing earlier about the septic system that's planned, and you had comments or questions about dosing rates and how much we're putting in the ground. This site, when tested, the soils were capable of absorbing five gallons per day per square foot. That's a lot of water. It's capable of absorbing that much. Between me and the design team, we implemented a factor of safety to reduce the amount of water we put in the ground per square foot for safety, and that's, the minimum factor of safety we usually apply is a factor of safety of 10. So that means we want a dose, we're restricting what the ground can take to what we're going to put in the ground, and that's at .5, a half a gallon per day per square foot. And even, and that's, and that's the most we typically want to put as a geologic restriction in sloping area and in areas with complex geology. So that would be the maximum we would allow as geologists, .5 gallons per day per square foot, which is 10 times less than what it can handle. And even further restriction on the site, we've added another layer of factor of safety. The design engineer, John Yerslawski Institute of Engineering, he's designed it to be just over .3 gallons per day per square foot. So we're even dosing even lower, so it equates to about a 15x factor of safety. And so that's pretty much it in regards to dosing, and in regards to the septic system too, the dosing area, we have, just like a lot of properties in Malibu, we're running out of easy lots. This is another landslide property, and that's all that seems to be left these days. And so in order to construct a septic system that would work in a sloping terrain with, you know, critical geology conditions, we have to provide a stable environment for it. That's a city requirement, it's a city geologist's requirement, so we have to protect the dosing area, the septic system and the development area from instability, so that requires a pile-supported retaining wall in this case, or soldier piles. So those are absolutely needed to provide the area to, we can put treated affluent into the ground. And we have to do it in an area that's not concentrated, we have to spread it out so we can get to that .358 gallons per day per square foot, which takes space. So whether this is going to be a 1,000-square-foot house or a five-story condo, we need to have that dosing area, and it needs to have the soldier piles and the pile-supported wall to protect it. It's just that simple. So and the last thing you guys touched on is dealing with reduced setbacks. The code is, you know, the tank typically by code has to be five feet minimum away from any structures. However, the code does allow for reduced setbacks. In this case, because the house is going to be on piles, you can go to a lesser setback. The same with the leach field, the dosing field. The minimum's eight feet from engineered structures, but we can certainly have, and we're allowing, a reduced setback to a pile-supported wall structure because the wall is designed to withstand it. So with that, I'll leave the rest of our time for rebuttal or if anybody else wants to speak. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very, very much. Hang on. Okay, we've got, you've got nine, anybody else from the applicant team would like to speak?
I'd like to speak, but I'm not.
I'll get you, I'll get you up here. Give me a chance to get, nobody else from the applicant team? Okay, you guys got nine minutes and 29 seconds left for rebuttal. Let me now bring up the other speakers, and I've got Jim Moore, who has got, assuming that Tracy Moore's here, assuming Marilyn is here, assuming, Krueg, Mr. Krueg? Can you read that name? I got.
I think everybody's here.
Solomon in Solomon?
Solomon and Follow, he's right there. Dwayne King.
King, all right, there's, okay.
There's Dwayne. Should be seven minutes until-
You got, you got seven minutes.
Okay, great, thank you. Just to respond very quickly to Commissioner Maz, we did speak, and the signup sheet that I got from the neighbors, I should have been more clear and a little bit more, you know, saying, stating better about their, why they were having concerns. We did do that in the first signup sheet I had from the neighbors on the April 1st hearing, so anyway, I should have been more clear on that. We're not here to block this development. We've been very clear about that from the beginning verbally and in writing. We're not here to block it. I would like to see something developed. We're simply asking that the developer present the plans within the right to build with no variances. If there were no variances, we probably wouldn't be here. We believe that the variances being requested are for the primary purpose of adding square footage, resulting in a higher value than similar neighboring properties for which your owners, in good faith, built their homes without requesting variances to maximize square footage. We believe the variance, if the variances are granted, that they will represent unnecessary, special, and unreasonable privileges being afforded to the developer, a concept not well accepted by the planning commission in the last hearing. We also are concerned about the precedent this will set to other developers who will be able to maximize square footage if this is allowed. Please remember that the original house was 2,000 square feet, and that included the garage. It was clarified in the last meeting. I noticed in the staff report, it still shows 2,000 plus a garage. The total's 2,000. The developer's still asking for 70% more square footage, and also, and this is why I respectfully disagree with the staff, it's well beyond the footprint of the original house. It goes way down the property. A simple solution for this project to move forward is to propose a smaller structure that does not require these variances. I hope you all saw this email that I sent this morning interpreting the codes for the retaining wall. I'd be happy to address that, but it's very clear that the Malibu municipal code overrides. You can't go above six feet or 12 feet with a combination of walls. And I also spoke with a professional who was a part of developing the overlay district, and he confirmed my email that was sent to Adrian on that. Additionally, the height of the wall was represented incorrectly at the April 1st hearing, and I do compliment Adrian and his team for having picked that up. It was actually, even though we were told it was not more than six feet high at any one point, it was actually higher than that. So there was an error in that. The variances, in the April 1st meeting, the developer's asking for two variances, the developer's still asking for two variances. This represents, in our opinion, opinion of my neighbors, that many conditions out of the norm, this is many conditions out of the norm with one compounding the other. The developer knew of these conditions prior to the purchase of the property, and it does not seem reasonable that our neighborhood should inherit issues related to these conditions. It's not the neighbor's fault. The first variance hasn't changed, that's just, they're requesting the one-and-a-half to, a building on slopes greater than one-and-a-half to one. And I did note too, that in some places, it's actually greater than one-to-one. The, we know it's going to be graded to two-to-one, but it's unusual to have microdosing systems on slopes greater than three-to-one, so this is still very concerning to us. You have a leach field that's on a prehistoric landslide, you have, you also have the arroyo coming down the hill that, coming from the Caya de Barca landslide, so to us, that's additional risk. The absorption rate was already addressed, I just saw it in Bart Slutsky's report, saying that the absorption rate is far too high for a drip field being installed in a hillside environment. The second variance, the variance number one, adding the square footage requires variance number two, with the wall higher than the six feet. A possible solution would be to have two walls, neither one exceeds six feet, and with at least three feet of separation. That'd be one possible solution, but there's still general concerns that we have, and that it does not fit into the, well into the character of the neighborhood. The wall is unusually a high barrier for our neighborhood, and it's going to have a brutal view impact from the PCH visual corridor. It's a huge, ugly-shaped infrastructure- It's a huge, ugly-shaped infrastructure regardless of its ultimate height. One might argue that there's a tree there on PCH, so it might mask some of the wall, but that's only partially true. Mostly, it's going to be seen, especially when you're going eastbound towards Santa Monica on Pacific Coast Highway. And the tree could always, the tree may not always be there, it could be trimmed, and construction of the wall could damage the tree. In the staff report, it states that, that, that the wall is not detrimental to the public interest, and that's on both page 11 and page 17. We totally disagree. We think it is detrimental to the public interest. Another, and also, it also mentions that it's adverse, it has adverse scenic or visual impacts, that it does not have that. We believe it absolutely does. In fact, I think one of my neighbors brought a picture. There is also a, a question that was brought up the April 1st meeting, that the caissons to support the wall are going to be very deep, and the depth cannot be determined until you drill the holes. There was also a question whether or not if they, if they're too deep, they're going to bend like a straw, okay? And that obviously would affect the integrity of the wall, so that's very concerning to us. And as you may recall, there was a retaining wall on Hume Road that did collapse last year. Not sure why, but it did collapse. We talked about the John Yerslawski Conformance Reports, that was discussed. I'm not sure I quite understood the answers, but anyway, I don't know if variances are really needed for that, for those matters or not. Just to summarize, if the, if the developer presents plans that are within the right to build, no variances, and within the standards of the Malibu municipal code and the Malibu-Lacosta Overlay District, we're good to go. And we're looking forward to having neighbors. It seems as if a smaller structure, similar to that of the original house that burned down, would achieve these goals. Thank you.
Mr. Moore, thank you very much. Next speaker is Castro. Norm, you're up after this young lady.
I am the owner of the property right below the new construction that is proposed. As you can see from the picture that I brought to you, I will be impacted to no end. Having such a massive house right on top of us, their height is approximately 80 feet, that's, that's the height of the actual grade, plus about 40 feet of the house. It's going to just make our living down there like frightening, because God forbid, as it was said, having those caissons not hold and having the house tumble down, it would be terrible. I have in front of me the report of the geological, Mr. Holt, that mentioned that there are faults in the area, many of them. I left my glasses, but anyway, that there are... without glasses, sorry.
Do you have a question?
The report was very detrimental, basically, and was alarming us about the property that eventually might be, because the land is unstable, it's mostly sandy, so having those caissons, that they don't even know how, how deep they have to go, and how will that impact my property, it's just frightening. Again, as Mr. Moore and as the Malibu city and rules will, will be the ones to, to say what has to be built, having a smaller house like the one before would really be the way to go. We won't face the septic tank, and in summer days and hot days like today would have a lovely, somehow odor from that, and having it right in front of our house, our property is also, you know, supposed to be our retirement home, just like the proposed occupant. We would like to enjoy our retirement, and I would really request that no variances would be given. As a matter of fact, I had to walk away from a project, building my own office, because it had caissons, and the, the price was exorbitant. I don't even know if the owner knows what's happening and what might be, but God forbid, in case of an emergency, if something happens to that house, being so big on such a shaky ground, basically, if it were to fall down and damage our house, I don't believe that there's going to be enough liability from the owner, and probably they will have to file bankruptcy. But we might be deep down six foot under, so please decline to, to let them go ahead as, as requested. Thank you so much.
Thank you very, very much. Norm, you're up.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the planning commission. First of all, shallow irrigation is being proposed. The .3 gallons going into per square foot won't actually go down into the ground. The whole concept of shallow irrigation is so that the area can be planted above, and analysis has shown that somewhere between 50 and 70% of the effluent actually goes up, not down. So now you're, you're not talking about reducing the amount of effluent per square foot that is considered safe, being .5, one-tenth. Now you're looking at one-third of one-tenth, and I think that that's relevant. Second, there's some kind of a concept here that if you build a high wall, then you're increasing the stability of the hillside. The fact of the matter is, those piles are going down, they're soldier piles, and they actually increase the stability of the hillside and make it less possible for that hillside to fail. One thing that I think sometimes people forget, and that's the geologists and the soils engineers that do these kinds of analysis, they're licensed, of course, but they also have liability insurance. And one thing that they cannot do is recommend something that would have a negative impact on their neighbors, either below, on either side, or above. If they do that, and it's shown that they were aware, that, that they did something that is inconsistent with standards, and, and therefore reduced the safety factor, they're liable. So I just wanted to bring those, those things. One last thing. The size of the tank is based upon the number of fixture units, and this is the smallest tank, the smallest amount of effluent that you can get away with in the city of Malibu. I live in a 1,400-square-foot house, it's a three-bedroom house, it would have the same amount of effluent, if you calculated it, as this house has. Thank you for your time.
Norm, thank you very much. Okay, African team, you've got nine minutes for rebuttal. Anybody like to say anything?
Hi, good evening. My name is Jose Fulginiti, I'm the civil engineer for the project and the project manager. Just a few, a few items that I would like to clarify. As far as the area of the house, yeah, we are proposing a living quarters of 2,963 square feet. You know, for you guys to know, the average size in Paseo Portola is 3,400 square feet, okay? And in the La Costa district is 3,100 square feet. So we are below that on average size. It is true that the original house was 2,000 square feet, but that was burned 30 years ago. You know, the same was true that Mr. Moore's house was 3,000 square feet before he rebuilt a 4,400 square feet house. So, you know, it's irrelevant. As far as the retaining wall that we are proposing, yeah, it is true, it is, you know, it's going to be a high wall, but it's going to be landscaped, it's going to be, we are going to shield it as much as we could, and we believe that it's going to be definitely shielded. And also, if I could, I would like to share with you pictures of the retaining wall that Mr. Moore's house has. Can I give you that to you?
If you give it to Catherine, she'll get him up to us, please.
There are actually two walls over there, a lower wall that is between four to five feet high, and an upper wall that is the five to six feet high, with a fence that is five foot high on top of that. So we are talking, that's, that wall that is closer to the house to be 11 feet high. And finally, you know, I don't know how this outer wall is going to affect Mr. Moore when the top of the wall is going to be approximately 20 feet below his lowest level. And then as far as Mrs. Castro's concern, you know, it would be nice if it's, she lives in the house. It's actually a rental, so I don't know how concerned she is about that. But anyway, the same with the house next door to that is an Airbnb, and is for sale. So, you know, I don't know how, you know, again, it's relevant, but it's important for you to know. Thank you.
Jose, thank you very much. Before I close public comment, anybody else like, have anything I'd like to add to the, to the subject? No, if not, we'll close the public comment, bring it back up to the commissioners.
I'd, I'd like to ask Mr. Moore a question. I don't know when the original house that burned down in 93 was built. It was obviously built under the county standards that existed at that time, but what I heard the geologist testify to was that whether the house that gets built on this spot is either 1,000 square feet or a five-story condo, the soldier piles wall still has to be built. Do you have any technical evidence that indicates that, that a house of the size that you are requesting could be built without the construction of the soldier pile wall?
I do not, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anybody else? Chair, okay, or John?
Richard, how big is the dispersal area? I'm sorry, Richard. It's going to be a long night.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question one more time?
How big is the dispersal area?
The dispersal area? Yeah, the architect said 2,100 square feet.
Never mind, just a second.
Yeah, according to the, excuse me, according to the approved plans, it says the drip dispersal field is 2,628 square feet.
So that's 780 gallons a day that they can, they can disperse. Is that adequate for a house? It seems, and I'm not an expert on this, but it seems kind of low, but maybe I'm wrong.
Would you like their geotechnical consultant to speak to that?
Sure. Yeah, I'll ask him.
Mr. Holt?
Did I calculate that right?
Yeah, mister, your calculations are correct. Actually, the design flow for the system is 750 gallons per day. That's the design flow, the maximum design flow that the system's designed for, so at the 3.58 gallons per day per square foot, you need the 20, 200, or whatever it is, square feet of dosing field.
So, say it's turned into an Airbnb. Is that a rational number for the amount of water that comes out of a house with heavy use? And then the second question is, if it, if it disperses more than 750, is there any kind of shut-off valve or anything involved?
I'm not the designer of the system, so I don't know if there's any built-in shut-off valves. I'm not aware of any, but based on just my knowledge of the engineering design, the average anticipated use on a four-bedroom house is actually 500 gallons per day, but the design flow, the way the system's designed, another layer of conservatism is that it's at 750 gallons per day is what the design, that's what the system is based to handle. But again, that, you got to keep in mind, that is taking into consideration 15 times factor of safety. So in reality, if there was a weekend where there was 900 gallons per day went into the ground, it can certainly handle it. It could handle 10 times that, it could handle probably 7,500 and perform adequately.
If we had a, a winter like we've had, where we get 20-plus inches of rain, what, what does that have to do with anything?
Or, or, or two or three inches in an hour?
It will have no effect on it because these design calculations are assuming, we have to make sure the system works, whether it's sunny days or rainy days. So in the days where there's rainy days, most of the water is sheet flow, but there is some infiltration. But again, that's why we incorporate the 10 times factor of safety, so the system will still work even with infiltration by precipitation. That's the, the beauty of these advanced systems.
Okay, and then Norm mentioned that the way these work, they're sort of like trans-evaporation systems, that there's a plant involved that sucks the water out of the ground?
Yep. Norm's, Norm's getting pretty good at, at these systems, but yes, he is correct, it's a, it's technically a micro-dosing or a vapour transpiration system. So the bonus feature to this system, because it's dripped into the shallow subsurface, the, it gets, most of the effluent will be transpired by the plants, and on sunny days in Malibu, we get evaporation, so we'll get little to no effluents going down. But we take no consideration for vapour transpiration, which is going to happen in reality, but in the design, our level of conservatism, we don't anticipate that, or we don't utilize that as part of the design. So we're not going to rely on vapour transpiration, even though it's certainly going to be happening, and most of the effluent is going to go up.
Now, when you establish those plants, you, I assume you have to water them. Is there a period where you exceed the level and then it goes away, or?
That is more of a, again, I'm not an expert on the, on the system design, because I'm not the project engineer for the, for the septic system, but I know on the plan, there's prescribed and recommended plant types that go over the dosing field, and the beauty of it is, is that if, when the system's working properly, you don't need to add any water because those plants are, are feeding off of the septic system. But in, in weeks where there's, you know, little to maybe no use of the house, maybe the occupants are on vacation on a month-long cruise, then certainly the, they might need a supplement of water to keep the plants going, but again, that's, that's all taken into consideration as part of the landscape plan.
So you're, you're saying there's some kind of sprinkler system when they're not there?
There can be, yes, and sometimes the, the water is not enough from the, the septic system to feed the plants, but again, that's the, the landscape plan.
Okay, thank you. Could I ask Norm a question? Norm, I got a little bit confused on your presentation about the walls. You were basically saying that the soldier piles that hold up the hill, what do the walls do? I understand this is a really deep soldier pile.
Okay.
And you put a, a nine-foot wall on it. Does that act like a sail, or does it actually do anything?
Oh, well, the piles are very deep, and they're relatively close together. And so the force of the hillside, forget the wall presently, the force of the hillside pushes on that wall wanting to fail. The wall prevents it from failing, okay? Because it's so deep, and the piles are so close together, the soil can't get through them, and you basically are creating a, basically a flagpole type of situation where it's so strong that it supports that hillside. With regard to the nine feet above, that does add a moment. A moment means a lateral force, and then you have a moment arm, which is the pile as it goes down to, to the point of fixity, where it doesn't move at all. So... So if I have something like this and it does not move below this, this will support the hillside and it will also support the nine feet above, which puts an additional lateral force and more bending moment, more force trying to get it to bend. But that's it is designed that way and it's very conservative. By the time by the time you get done with the contingencies on the strength of the concrete, the contingencies on the strength of the steel and the contingencies associated with assuming the lateral force, these walls are overdesigned. Does that answer your question?
I can understand that. I'm just trying to understand, say you had a 100-foot pile, soldier pile, and you had a nine-foot wall on the top of it. It seems to me like the nine-foot wall isn't, what does it do? It doesn't seem like it's contributing a whole lot.
Would you like their geotechnical consultant to address that?
Yeah.
Sure, well, I thought he was a technical consultant, but okay.
Norm is a member of the audience tonight, I believe.
That's correct.
Yeah, but he's also.
She's right. And if we haven't, that should be something that he that Jake can add.
Mr. Holt, come on back up, please. Can you address Mr. Ross's question?
What Norm was trying to say is the wall and the soldier piles, the wall is built on top of the soldier piles. They're they're a tied-together system. The wall on top of the piles is needed to backfill to create the two-to-one slope for the septic system to be placed on.
So it just holds up the dirt on the backfill?
That's correct.
Okay.
And it not only does that, but it also provides code-conforming stability for the entire slope because of the deep piles that are going down 60 feet, 70 feet, whatever the structural engineer determines in the final plans.
Okay, then that brings up another question on the backfill. Do you need special dirt for that? I mean, you said that this dirt is, the dirt that's there is too absorbent. Do you put less absorbent dirt on top or?
As part of the wastewater system plans, there's a specially-designed engineered fill mix that's going to go behind the wall, in this case, for the microdosing system. And it it's, it doesn't need to be, but it's going to be less permeable than the underlying soils itself because we're dosing so low.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any more?
That's it, John?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very, very much. Mr. Hill?
Yes, I have sort of two general categories of questions, both of which relate back to what we saw the last time. I think we were really concerned that about the size and and both these problems we sort of figured out could be addressed if the if the house were a little bit smaller, and that's not really what we got back. The first one is on the west side of the house, that slope is really steep there. And I think we expressly talked about it the last time. If the house were smaller, it could be set back a little bit from that slope, away from the one-to-one there, away from the Caie del Barco slide, back more into the footprint of the previous house. It, there's code in the La Costa overlay, number eight, site of construction, says, quote, "Structures may be constructed on slopes flatter than 1.5 to 1." That's what we're talking about, the variance here. On that west side, what I see is you're talking about building a house on a on a slope, one-to-one. And when I say on, I mean not stretching down the slope, but right on top of it with no setback. And to me, that is, in effect, on the slope. So I I and and I don't know that I can make finding one that suggesting that development on steep slopes is unavoidable because I feel like if there were a smaller house, you could avoid some of that hazard. And likewise about finding two with the variance being detrimental to the public interest, safety, et cetera, I think with the Caie del Barco slide over on that side and the fact that when you look at the site right now, you you already the pilings on that western edge are starting to tilt slightly towards that canyon, suggesting that there has been some movement. So I'm very uncomfortable with putting that string line right there where those tilted pilings exist already. And then my second big concern is with that that big facade wall on the bottom and how that's going to look from the highway and how the safety is going to work in terms of what's down below there. I think I'm hearing some answers about the safety that that sound a little better, but it's still a big, flat-wall facade that's not permitted in the La Costa overlay district. And what I heard from Adrian previously was that to make the wall compliant, you'd have to put the four-foot setbacks and indentations in it, which would make the field smaller, which would leave less room for the house. And again, a slightly smaller house would allow you to accommodate that. So I have trouble with with that one, too. I don't know if anybody else wants to comment on on those?
Well, I'd like to hear the geologists talk about that one-to-one slope.
Yeah, let's let's hear what you have to say about the west side.
I'm going to sit closer. Yes, as part of that, we're very aware of the geology conditions on the west-facing slope, which is actually the adjacent property. As part of our work for this site, we explored and analyzed fully that that west-facing slope. And we're aware of the instabilities that it has, just like typical hillsides in Malibu, a lot of them have, you know, stability problems. But because of that analysis, and we are recommending the piles for the house are going to protect our structure from the instability of that slope. So that slope can wash away, it can fail, it can get worse than it is, but it will eventually reach our pile line or our house, and our house will be perfectly stable. And our house will actually be at added benefit to the neighborhood because it provides a layer of protection to Mr. Moore's property as a buffer to the instability on that west-facing slope.
So if you let that slope wash away and fail, then you'd be left with a giant wall facade on the west side of the property, right?
No, we don't, we're not having subsurface walls. There'll be pile systems. There's piles underneath our house, the soldier piles that are holding our property to the firm bedrock.
But does not read functionally as a wall?
They would function as a wall by engineering standards, but it doesn't look like a wall.
Maybe it's, I guess it's not, it's not as apparent to the the highway on the side there.
Well, and you said that was somebody else's property.
I believe, yeah, it's a it's a separate parcel to this to this address.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Okay, anybody else? Commissioner Jennings? I've got one question, but then.
Are we doing questions? No, I don't have.
Okay, just Adrian. In in the staff report, there's, and this is in every single staff report, it says, you know, "The project is the least environmentally damaging alternative." Does the applicant provide you with different drawings to say to to demonstrate that? How do you, I mean, right, if it's, I mean, when I read it, you say you you put it in different locations, you looked at different locations for the house. And I'm wondering if you get something from the applicant that says, "I looked at these different things and this is the one that's the best."
So that analysis is analysis staff makes, and that's based on all the evidence that's collected throughout the review process of a project. And so a lot of the times, there are other options that we contemplate and we do ask for additional information when there's, for example, you know, different building pads. And we don't know if one building pad is better than the other, so we may ask for additional information. In this case, again, there is one building pad. The building pad was previously disturbed, so keeping all development there and demonstrating that they comply with all the other agencies, that to us is the least environmentally damaging. Then any other option which will maybe push the development down the slope or anything else.
So you guys do it versus having the applicant's architect give you something?
Excuse me?
Just, I keep reading this, and the first time I said, "How do you figure that out?"
It's just a middle requirement, and a lot of times what we initially receive from applicants is not very detailed or illustrative. And as Adrian mentioned, we will ask for, well, what about this? Would this solve this problem or that problem? So it's really a case-by-case thing. I mean, some some sites don't really have any sensitivities that you need to worry about once you meet the development standards, so that, you know, sometimes is, makes it very simple.
One more, Jack, go ahead.
One more. What type of landscaping is proposed for the walls? They mentioned that they were going to be landscaped so you couldn't see walls from the highway. Is there bushes or something going to be in front of them or?
To be honest, I I don't know. The landscaping plan is something that was approved in the early stages of the project, and this project was, there was a different case planner at the time. So when I took this project over, there hasn't been any updates to that landscaping plan.
Let's go, Jose.
Jose, could you tell us?
Jose, do you?
But while he's getting up there, Richard, there's no, there's no landscaping plan in this approval?
It's in the the back of the plan, so it is an approval landscaping plan.
Question is, what are you guys thinking of doing to try and?
Well, you know, we have to use drought-resistant plants that are usually there, and we will definitely do our best to to cover that and, you know, which is usually, on top of that, if you look at the pictures, there are already some big trees between the houses that are on PCH and this, and the wall is actually on the other side, you know, it's on the on the south side. So, you know.
Just something, as long as you're aware of that and something you want to keep in mind as you go down the line, yeah.
Absolutely. We will definitely do that, and I mean, that's, you know.
Cool. Can you get a motion?
Well, oops.
Let me speak to that to that last issue because years ago, in a very long time now, but we had a similar issue that arose with regard to a high-retaining wall. I can't remember now what part of the city it was in. But we simply specified that the wall was to be constructed of the, with the chambered bricks on the exterior that that provided for spaces in which plants could grow, and they would be planted with succulents or whatever. And you could make the whole wall, you could have the concrete disappear if you wanted to do that, and we could condition the the wall to to have that effect if we're so inclined. Yeah, let me say that that to me, better turn on the microphone rather than on, it seems to me that the height of the house or the the size of the house is well within the La Costa overlay district requirements. The only issue is whether to grant a variance for the slopes, building on the slopes, and I don't think it would be possible really to build without going down on the slope at least to one degree or another. And as the geologist testified, if whether that's a 1,000-square-foot house or a five-story condo, there's going to be this retaining wall built. And and so under the circumstances, I'm inclined to support it with the suggestion that the retaining wall be be faced with, can't come up with the words now, but that are basically cement structures that are, concrete structures that allow for the planting of plants to the height of the wall.
Vertical landscaping would be.
Yes, exactly. So that would be my motion.
So is landscaping an alternative to having the plants integrated? I think the the project you're recalling is the Spurper project where, and I think it was Commissioner Brotman at the time, recommended a green wall and in order to mitigate the appearance of retaining walls, yeah, or or maybe it was even site walls facing the neighbor's property. And I believe in the end that there was concern from the applicant, and then they ended up revising the project because of the cost associated with that sort of structural masonry wall.
So what's your suggestion?
If there's an alternative way to screen the wall that, I mean, if the applicant is willing to do the type of construction you're suggesting, I'm just trying to make sure they understand or have an idea of whether they're willing to do that or not.
I'd like to. I'm going to get you up there, go ahead, yeah, finish your, go around the topic.
I just looked at the landscaping plan. It says total area to be landscaped, 110 square feet. So it's massively lacking if if we're supposed to be covering this.
Well, that we can put that in the resolution, okay, that's who we're headed.
Well, even the septic area isn't proposed to be landscaped.
Yeah, you know, what? Yes, absolutely. We are, we are more than, we are more than willing to do that and actually, you know, to do vertical landscape, especially on the south side of the wall, which is the one that you will see, you know, basically from from PCH, you know, and that's definitely will cover the wall, you know, that's something, is that what you're talking about?
I believe that.
That's what I'm talking about, yeah.
So, yeah, so if we put a a landscaping plan to cover the wall as a condition, you don't have a problem with that?
I have no problem with it.
Okay.
A question for Adrian. Is it, is my observation accurate that the slope on the western side is steeper than the slope on the south side?
We may not have that data because that's somebody else's property.
Well, but they would have the topography for this. It's the the slope starts right at the string line, so it's, and there's a five-foot setback on the property, so there's steep slope within this property line, at least five feet of it. I guess my my concern is about the finding on the slope variance. I think the steepest part of the slope would be avoidable if there was a smaller house. So for the variance for this, and I don't know that it's entirely accurate to say that it could be a 1,000-square-foot house or a giant condo. It seems like if you could avoid that western side, you'd be avoiding the worst of the steepness.
So so there is a color-coded slope analysis that was included in the, it's one of the attachments to the staff report. In it, it shows all the areas that are steeper than one and a half to one, and these areas are identified in red. The distance between the contour lines on the western side of the house versus the distance between the contours just south of the house, they seem to be pretty consistent, about the same distance. So I would say about the same steepness. But as you can see from from this color-coded slope analysis, there is no development proposed on that side of the steep slopes. The house is just outside of those steep slopes, and it's also just outside the southern steep slopes. It's just the retaining wall that they're proposing that crosses over the steep slopes on the south eastern part of the property.
Okay, the piles that are there now that are starting to tilt are within the diagram of the house, they're within the the strength, the story poles. But I, so it feels like if you had, instead of the five-foot setback, if you had a 10-foot or a 15-foot setback on that side, it would be much safer in the long run. And in terms of being a deprivation relative to other houses in the neighborhood, I could see making a house here that's, you know, 2,500 square feet or maybe a little bit more, I don't know how much you could fit, that would avoid this issue on this side and still, you know, that would not be a deprivation relative to to other neighbors.
How deep is the, how, how deep is the house on that side? Is it 40 feet, 30 feet? If you took another five feet off, how many square feet are you talking about?
So, and again, I think it's important to point out that the variance is not applied to the house. The variance they're proposing is for the retaining wall. So they're depicting on the color-coded slope analysis that none of the proposed development for the house is on steep slopes. It's only the retaining wall. It is close, it is, you know, very close to those steep slopes, but they're just outside of those.
And then, could, you might, if you have questions about the condition of the remaining foundation that's still there, Mr. Holt may be able to address. I think you earlier said in your disclosures about you were concerned that it's not such an ancient landslide if the walls are tilting there. I don't know if that's part of your concern about this setback issue, but it's, it may be.
One thing I forgot to touch on earlier, just which is, I think, is critical of this aspect in talking about, you know, reducing the size of the house. If the house was reduced from a four-bedroom to a three-bedroom, the minimum design flow for the septic system would not be decreased. It's always going to be at the minimum of 750 gallons per day. would not be decreased, it's always going to be at the minimum of 750 gallons per day. So even if the house size was reduced, the size of the septic field is going to be the same, the need for the pile supported retaining wall and the surrounding soldier pile system will not change, so.
Is it not true that, I think Adrian, you told me this on the phone, if the house was somewhat smaller, that would allow for the staggered wall on the south side, for the wall to be staggered and still allow enough room for the dispersal field if the house was a little bit smaller? I'm guessing if it were maybe four feet smaller, because that's what the stagger would be.
And that's based on an interpretation that the retaining wall is, falls under the category of the facade wall that's in the overlay, that you're, that's what you're basing that on? And I think.
Yeah, yes, except the language is not facade wall, the language is flat walls, facade. It's, and it's a flat wall and it's a.
Right.
So in terms of the spirit of the code, it's, I think it's an aesthetic designation, right? The point was to have not a lot of like big blocky stuff on the hill and that's exactly what this would be.
Well, let me ask Adrian, if you look at the plot plan of the foundation, which is FP, I guess, it shows, there's a question, you know, there's, there's a difference between a cliff in front of you and a cliff next to you and there is nothing, it looks like there's nothing other than the foundation of the house on what Craig is talking about, it says not a part. There's a, there's a line there, it says not a part and then there's a setback, but that's where the cliff is, I guess, going into the canyon. So all the soldier piles out front are to keep the house from falling into the highway. And I think what Craig's bringing out is what keeps the house from falling into the gully? Well, there are, there are soldier piles here, but the factor of safety, I mean, if this was on a bluff, it'd be 50 feet. So what is the distance along that line that the house occupies? There doesn't seem to be any scale on here. See what I'm talking about?
Yes, I don't know if we have a dimension that gives us that distance.
Because I don't want to, I'm not saying whack the house a lot, but you also don't want to build a house on a cliff and say, gee, if the cliff falls down, the house will still be standing. It's on more of a cliff.
That's why we rely on the testimony of the experts rather than our own feelings.
Right, and so far the experts have been testifying about the soldier pile wall that's shown in this diagram that has nothing to do with that side.
No, Jeff, I think spoke to that once already.
Here?
Yeah, I think he said.
Mr. Maza, just to correct you, in addition to the soldier pile wall along the southern, you know, project boundary and the septic system, there is soldier piles that are extending up the entire west property line or setback off of it and then transitioning to the foundation system for the residents. So there's an integral soldier pile, foundation pile system along that entire western border to protect the residents and the neighborhood from any instability to the steep slopes to the west also. So we, our job is to protect this property around all sides and we're effectively pinning it with the soldier pile system consistent with what the city geologists want.
Right, and what I'm asking is, the soldier pile wall that goes up the west side of the property, goes along the property line, the soldier pile wall for the foundation is setback and that's the area where we have the tilt. So there's nothing between the foundation soldier piles and the gully that keeps that from sliding away. It's, you're saying that if that slides away, the house won't.
Right.
You're correct.
Okay, so what situation do we have with a house that is right on a cliff?
That house is not going to slide or go anywhere. It's, it's, it's going to be structurally designed to withstand any movement, landslide, slipage or settlement that will not have an adverse effect on this property or any adjacent property as designed.
Yeah, but we have the, one of the things that we have to consider is the fire department walk around. If there's no way to walk around it, there's no way to fight the fire. So why?
I don't design the walkarounds, I'm just responsible for putting the piles in the ground.
Yeah, that's actually a good point, as, as it stands with the string line there, you don't even have the five foot walk around.
If you look at the grading plan, there's a walk around.
It's drawn, but on the, it's drawn, but on the site, it's, it's already one to one beyond the story poles.
Well, it's, they're not going to get approved for their building permit unless they have a walk around. The fire department's going to go and look after the initial grading is done and guarantee or, you know, approve the site for access and things like that, so it's got to have the walk around.
You know, I, and let me just, I appreciate the questions, I think they're good, I think you're trying to, you know, to get good answers, but at least from my perspective, I mean, we've hammered the soldier piles and the walls and landscaping, I mean, I, from my perspective, I've heard answers to all the questions I had, so.
Okay, Adrian, what would it take to make the nine foot walls staggered? Is that impossible now with the same size house or is, how?
So as mentioned before, we're talking about moving a portion of the wall further south, is that, is that what we're proposing? So that portion would be higher in height in order to do that?
Or would you, you'd move a portion of the wall two feet closer to the house and a portion of the wall two feet further away from the house? So that the wall would maybe be at the same average height?
The only issue with that, I think your dispersal area still becomes smaller given the radius around the break to comply with the setback. There's an eight foot setback requirement from the, for the wall.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I made a motion, but it never got seconded.
Do it again, Jeff, just, I'm sorry, Adrian.
My motion was the staff recommendation with the.
Motion was the staff recommendation with the provision or the condition that the retaining wall be landscaped, vertical, vertical landscaping, I think the term was used.
To add a condition requiring vertical living landscaping.
On the wall.
That covers the nine foot retaining wall, is that be correct?
Yeah. Okay, anybody want to second this? I will.
Would, to clarify, would vines be okay for covering that wall?
Leave that up to the planning director. Casey, go to motion in a second. Kathleen, see what everybody thinks.
Vice Chair Jennings? Chair Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Commissioner Namaza? Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen. Let's move along, item 4B. Administrative Plan Review Number 17034, variance number 18047, an application permit the repair and restoration of a failed slope continued from August 19th and this is on Malibu Canyon Road on the HRL property. Renika, talk to us.
Good evening, Chair Euring and members of the Planning Commission. This application is a request for an administrative plan review to allow for the slope repair, for the repair of a failed slope. The APR would normally be decided upon by the planning director, but because the slope repair requires the installation of retaining walls on slopes between two and a half to one to one to one, the application requires a variance, which is under the authorization of the Planning Commission. The project site is located on a 65 acre parcel developed with a research and development facility that has been owned and operated by HRL since prior, prior to cityhood. The, the project site is surrounded by vacant property to the northwest and east and is developed with single family residences and Malibu Presbyterian Church to the south. The project includes the construction of two retaining walls that are 50 linear feet in width. Behind each retaining wall includes drainage improvements, which consist of concrete swells and catch basins. And I wanted to clarify too, the, the two retaining walls will not exceed the maximum height of 12 feet for the combination of the two retaining walls, bless you. Associated with this project includes grading, which includes 500 cubic yards of removal and recompaction and 1,700 cubic yards of remedial grading. Required for the slope repair would be the installation of a temporary access road, which would be accessed at the base of the hill. I'll have a slide that shows how creating this temporary access road and heavy equipment area would be the most efficient way to manage the construction of the, of the slope repair. And again, the application requires a variance for the construction on steep slopes. Here's a brief chronology of how we landed here. In 2007, a wildfire burned the vegetation on the south facing slope. In January 2016, the slope failed. Shortly thereafter, heavy rains saturated the slope area. Immediately after the rains saturated the, the slope area, the owner placed sandbags and visqueen sheeting, which is basically like waterproof plastic to minimize additional erosion of the felt slope area. Shortly thereafter, a geotectical consultant did some testing and identified that a previously unidentified leak caused the slope to fail. And in May of 2017, the application was submitted to the city for processing. Here's a site plan that shows the scope of work proposed in this application. The blue heavy line is an outline of the southern corner of the building for their R and D facility. The area illustrated in black is the area proposed for the remedial grading. This area is, consists of approximately 3,000 square feet. And green are the proposed location of the retaining walls. The gray shaded area is the location of the temporary access road and the heavy equipment staging area. And as identified in a biological assessment prepared by RENCON in 2017, the brown solid line represents the edge of the ESHA boundary and the brown dash line represents the required 100 foot buffer to protect the ESHA. This is an aerial photo of the, of the project site, really in an effort to demonstrate how creating the temporary access at the base of the slope would be the most efficient way to manage construction of the remedial grading for the slope repair. As you can see, to the east is the primary point of access to the R and D facility. This is roughly about a third of a mile from the base of the property. And at that primary point of access is a narrow road that surrounds the perimeter of the development and also winds through the site, making it a challenge for heavy equipment to reach the area for the slope repair. At the southern portion of the property is the location of not only the slope repair, but also the area for the temporary access road. This slope analysis demonstrates the location of the retaining walls on the fuchsia colored area, which is the steep slopes. This is an area, aerial, excuse me, a photo taken, standing from in front of Malibu Presbyterian Church looking north at the project site. As you can see, at the very top is the area that still has the sandbags and the visqueen sheeting to protect the, the slope there, the felt slope area. This is a, so a couple of photos, a little closer, looking at the area of the felt slope on the, the upper left hand corner and on the bottom right hand corner is a photo taken from the biological assessment, looking, looking south at Malibu Canyon Road and to the right is the edge of the ESHA boundary. This is a photo taken from the biological assessment prepared by RENCON. As you can see, the solid green line represents the location of the drainage and riparian habitat, which consists of the ESHA and the green dotted line represents the required 100 foot buffer from the ESHA. As you can see in this photo, the area outlined in yellow represents the location of the proposed construction, including the location of the temporary access road. At the time of the, the survey done by the biologist, the site, as you can see, was barren of native vegetation. And with that, staff was able to make all required findings associated with this application, including the variance request for construction on steep slopes. And that does conclude my presentation and I am available for any questions.
Renika, thank you very much. Any disclosures?
Yes, I called and spoke with the applicant and got him to send me the RENCON bio assessment and I thought that was going to be sent to everybody, but I don't know that everybody did get it. We also had some discussion about potential alternate routes and I had not been to the site yet, so I was a little fuzzy about whether those might be possible and I, now having seen the site, I have a few questions about a poss, a potential alternate route that would avoid some of the ESHA, but we can, we can get into that.
John?
No, no disclosure.
I live up in Malibu Canyon, so every time I go home, I look, I can see the, the plastic sitting on the hillside, so I'm aware of it's there, that's, as close as I've gotten. All right, we have any questions for staff before we got the applicant prepared to speak?
Question.
Go ahead.
And maybe I'm just confused, but I read the resolution and we're, we're, we're voting on an administrative plan review, but it doesn't seem to have any time associated with it. I assume that the date of it is when Bonnie approved it, not when we vote for it, but I'm not sure about that. But on, on, in the conditions on page 505, number 12, well, no, that's not it. Number 11 gives the planning director the right to give it a four one year extensions, but the, I don't see where it has an initial period involved.
So this, as Renika mentioned, this is an administrative plan review that would normally be a director approval, but it has a variance, so that falls under the Planning Commission's purview. The date of approval would be the date that you adopt a resolution, so.
But I couldn't find anything in the resolution that said we're giving approval for three years, like we usually do. It just, it just says you approve it.
It's condition number seven. On page four, it expires three years from the date of approval, which, so this is giving you the, actually, that needs to be updated.
I may be looking at a different one, because I, I have it on page three, I have number seven.
Yeah, resolution 1947.
Am I wrong? There's a resolution, right?
Number seven.
Here, what is this?
That's the resolution, that's page four, the resolution that you'd be adopting, follows immediately after the staff report.
That's not number seven, oh, a different, okay, I got you. So why doesn't it have to come out back to us for extension? I mean, I haven't seen this before where. I mean, I haven't seen this before, where we pass it, we give it three years, but we give you the authority to extend. I haven't seen that before.
You know what? I don't know if the municipal code...
Because it's not a coastal development permit, we're just doing...
Right, it's an APR, so the, it, the language is a little different than the municipal code as far as appeals go, so we can try to look it up real quick and confirm.
If you want to open the public hearing, we can come back to that after.
Okay, great.
Anybody else before we start? No?
Oh, I have one question, Renika, is, are there, is there one 12-foot wall, or are there two 6-foot walls?
There are two, two six...
The way it reads is two 6-foot walls equal 12. It never says you're limited to six feet, that I could find.
What size are the walls?
They're six feet each, separated by three feet. So as a, with the combination, well, the combination of the two walls will not exceed 12 feet in height.
Got you.
Consistent with the Malibu Municipal Code.
Let me open the public hearing, the applicant, Mr. Vell Levin and Bill, is it Bill La Campel? Part of the applicant team? Okay, you've got 15 minutes, or you're on?
Okay, good evening. My name is Vell Levin, I'm a civil and structural engineer. As you know from chronology that has been shown here, the landslide occurred in 2000, January 2016, and HRL immediately shut off the irrigation line and put all the protective measures required to protect the slope. We submitted plan to the city in May 2017, and today, more than three and a half years after landslide, the owner is still aware of the extent of the potential damage that may occur to the property if the hazards are not fully mitigated. The headscarf is only 45 to 50 feet from the main building, which was built in 1956. Any further slope failure may undermine this building, which has a shallow foundation. The rainy season, as you know, starts November 1st, therefore, we have less than two months to complete the project, which is probably unrealistic, but we have a good chance, once the permit is obtained, at least to secure 12-inch diameter high-pressure water line that runs parallel to the building there. And that line is five feet up from the headscarf. And maybe if the time allows, we can build at least one retaining wall to secure the slope, because like I explained to you, it's too close to the main building there. Therefore, we request approval and application, and I think if you have any creation, I'm more than willing to, to answer.
Okay, sir, thank you very much. Bill, do you have any comments?
Yes.
You're part of the applicant team, right?
Beg your pardon?
You're part of the applicant team?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
My name's Bill LaChappelle, I'm the lead geologist at Earth Systems. No, your pronunciation is good. With a name like that, you don't criticize public. The, I've been working in Malibu since 1976. I've done hundreds of projects in Malibu, virtually all of them improved the city one way or the other. I've also written 14 papers, four of them deal specifically with landscape stability in Malibu. The last one covers the entire city, east to west. This project started out as a failure. The failure occurred in the winter months, and we were asked to come in and design a stable, safe repair. The, so what we did is design a approach of our investigation to do that. What we originally recommended is a little bit different, it's evolved over time, and so it's a little bit different than we had originally proposed. The city policy allows for restoration of slopes that don't conform strictly to the code. We like those, frankly, because we have less liability. And looking at this project over time, we made a recommendation that they come in and remove and repair in a conventional way. The slopes that descend are steeper than two to one. They told us that, no, you're too close to the building for the reasons that Vell just explained. We had to protect that area and stay out of it, so that soldier piles, that's how the soldier piles came about. They protect the area, they allow us to do the restoration, and they have one other benefit, in that they allow the slope below this wall to be co-conforming. So, and we've proven that the site's improved in stability. The city policy allows you to make the restorations under what they term a restoration application that doesn't strictly conform with the code. And all you're really required, the bottom line is, all you're really required to do is to show that you're improving situations. You can do that with grading, you can do that with drainage, other features. This project has all of those, and it conforms with the code, as I say. The reason behind that is that this failure is a natural occurrence, it's no different than, it's no less of a disaster for the property owner than a fire would be. And so the city has traditionally made these allowances, and we've improved this project in talking with the city about site logistics and about construction sequence in order to improve it. We think we have a much better project here, and it's, as it's evolved. Okay, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Before I close public commu, anybody else like to speak on this subject? Not, close it down, bring it back up to commission table. Commissioners?
I'm going to move the staff recommendation.
Chair, you're going to answer the question too, about the extent, the extension issue. It comes directly from the municipal codes, section 1762030E, and it says that the planning manager-director may grant it to four one-year extensions of the expiration of an APR approval, which is exactly the condition.
Including the variance. Yeah, just never seen it before. Okay, I'll second Jeff's motion.
Okay, I'd like to ask just a couple of questions, Jeff, if I could. Vell, if you could just, how long is it going to take you to finish this job?
Well, we have a contractor, as a matter of fact, here. He can, probably would be able to answer. He's done many slope repair job, retaining walls, so he, he's right here, Leon Kraus, and he probably would be able to...
Just, I just need, you know, a month, two months, three months? Six to eight months, depending upon what...
Two to eight months. Or six to eight months, yeah.
Okay. Well, the, you know, the, I think you, it was a comment you made, that if you could get the process going, hopefully get one of the retaining walls up, because I think you also said that this is starting to undermine the...
The building itself, right? It's over 40, 50 feet from the, from the building.
So Bonnie, here's the question. I mean, typically rainy season starts, what, November 1st?
Yes.
Okay, but, you know, climate's changing, all right? I mean, is there any way to say, if, if they need till November 15th to get that first process done, is, is there a way to look at that and say, if it isn't raining, we can let them go? I'm just trying to get you guys, as much as you can get.
Yeah, the building, the building official has the ability to allow for work to happen if it's, if it will result in a safer condition.
Okay, so even...
And I think that's what the condition says.
I think the code actually says, if it starts before November 1st.
What?
Then you can, you can continue if they let you do it.
You're going to start before November 1st?
I believe that's right, isn't it, Bonnie? But if they can't start after November 1st?
Yeah, so there's one condition that deals with that, it's condition 19, that's more biology-related, that says that the city biologists would have to approve, review and a comprehensive erosion control plan, and then, condition number 27, yes, it refers to if grading operations are not completed before the rainy season begins, grading shall be halted and temporary erosion control measures shall be put into place unless the city determines that completion of grading would be more protective of resources. So it, yes, it suggests that it should start ahead of the...
How fast, after, if, if we approve this, how fast can you guys get going on this? What would, they have to go through anything else? Can they just...
Well, we have to get the plans into the plane check, so an expedite probably, so hopefully if we get the permit by, let's say, by the end of these months or beginning, so they can probably start right away. They are ready to, the machine, everything is ready to start.
And hopefully we can get some stuff processed through to get you guys going, because I, I mean, you don't want that hillside coming down, right? Okay.
Let me ask one question.
Go ahead.
Would this affect traffic on Malibu Road 20-point?
No, 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 everything will be done on the property there.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes, I have a couple of questions that probably aren't deal breakers, but might lead to a condition or two. The ESHA on the west side is substantially bigger than it is in the RINCON report that was done in 2017 after six years of drought, so there was a recommendation in, in the biology report that revegetation be done, but it was a recommendation, not a requirement, so I would recommend that the existing ESHA that will be impacted by this to some degree be restored, that there be some restoration clause condition put in on the, on the ESHA stuff.
No problem, yeah.
No problem with that, right?
Yeah.
And then, that road is pretty steep, so I'm wondering, will it need some sort of surfacing, or how, how do you...
Well, he says no, they would be able to climb there with the machines, there's no problem.
So it's going to remain permeable the whole time?
Right, yeah.
Okay, and the steepness, that's not going to create any sort of drainage issue in terms of like some river of mud that might come across the highway in a, in a storm or anything like that?
No, we'll do all the erosion control measure, whatever that needs to be done, so prevent anything there, absolutely, yeah.
And then, and so I guess the, the remediation of the road would fall under the same condition as the, the ESHA restoration, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay, that, that answers my question.
Okay, so we had a motion, we had a second, we added the issue of revegetation, mhm. Done with that? You accept that? Okay, anybody else? Kathleen, give us a roll call.
Vice Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Chair Uring?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much, guys. All right, we're on to item 5A. Times at 8:30, all right. Coastal development permit number 13064, code violation number 19006, variance numbers 19007, 1920, 19021, demolition permit number 19016, follow-up coastal development permit for emergency slope and drainage repair for the demolition of unpermitted work and permitting after the fact, hardscape, location is 32640 Pacific Coast Highway. Say 30, you guys want to take a break before, because this, this...
Yeah, that's okay.
Want to take a quick break, Jeff?
I do.
Is that, okay, we're going to take, huh? Five-minute break, how about?
3:40.
3:40.
8:40.
8:40, I mean, but I wish it was 3:40. Okay, folks, to bring the, the meeting back to order, this is item 5A. May we get a staff report, please?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chair Uring and members of the commission. The project before you this evening is coastal development permit number 13064, and it's associated with code violation number 19006, and includes variance numbers 19007, 19020, 19021, and demolition permit number 19016. This project is at both 32640 Pacific Coast Highway and La Piadra State Beach, which you can see here. The project is occurring, kind of straddling the property line between the state beach, state park, and the existing single-family residence, which was approved by the California Coastal Commission in 2001, and the City of Malibu in 2003. Construction for this house was finalized in 2007. To give you a little bit of a history of this project, in 2005, when this, when the residence was being constructed, unauthorized fill was dumped into the ravine west of the property, and an ECDP was subsequently issued to address the unauthorized fill and the damage that occurred to the ravine because of that fill. On September 18th, 2007, the planning commission adopted resolution 0777, approving the follow-up to that ECDP. After that, in 2008, stairs that were constructed in the ravine, some bluff top and ravine top walls, patio, steel poles supporting a shade structure, and a stone archway were reported to the city and observed by the city, and they were constructed on the bluff and in the ravine without the benefit of permits. Following that, in 2011, an over-the-counter permit was approved to allow the removal of the steel poles and the archway and relocate the bluff top walls, and an administrative plan review was also approved to demo the stairs that were constructed in the ravine. However, none of that work was completed, and on September 11th, 2011, a settlement agreement was recorded between the County of Los Angeles, or by the County of Los Angeles, between the City of Malibu and the property owner. Following that settlement agreement, in December 2013, this application that, which you have before you now, was submitted to address the slope repair and the ravine revegetation, as well as the code violations. The erosion of the ravine and a slope failure which occurred in March 2010 has resulted in near-vertical slopes, which I'll show you later on in this presentation, approximately 50 feet deep, adjacent to the front walkway of the residence. And due to the imminent danger to this residence from the retreat of the slope, the city issued ECDP number 18005 last October. This application also serves as the follow, required follow-up CDP for that ECDP. The project generally includes four broad components, and I'll go into more detail about each of these. The remedial grading required to repair the ravine, the, some drainage infrastructure repair and expansion to keep future erosion from occurring, revegetation of the ravine, and response to the code violations. To be clear, all of the code violations, with the exception of the unpermitted fill, occur only on the residential property, not on the park. And as I described earlier, this application includes three variances and a demolition, demolition permit. The demolition permit is related to many of the code violations, which I'll again talk about in more detail. A variance to allow remedial grading over 15,000, 15,000 cubic yards, over 18,000 cubic yards are proposed, a variance to allow a nine-foot-tall stone archway within the required front yard setback to remain, and another variance to allow for the 115-foot section of the bluff top wall located within the required bluff top setback. So the ECDP, again, addressed the slope failure and is part of the overall remedial grading plan. Um... You can see here, the property, the residential property is on the lower portion of the screen, and the state beach is on the upper portion with PCH on the right. And in this image, you can see the remedial grading that has already occurred as approved under the ECDP, with some of the drainage included as well. The CDP will build on this remedial grading that has already occurred. This included about 7,500 cubic yards of remedial grading, and you'll see in a later image that it will extend beyond this. As part of the ECDP and the remedial grading that will continue, a temporary access road was created on the state park side of the project area within the Caltrans right-of-way. The parking, there's already a no parking zone, as you can see, and then the, the X, the egress area is only temporarily blocked during construction hours. This road will be removed and restored, the area will be restored to what it was previously following the completion of the project. And the, the fill that was used to create this road will be incorporated into the remedial grading. And all of that fill is included in the calculations that were provided to you in the staff report. As I said, the CDP expands on the ECDP that's already taken place. And what you can see here is the full scope of the proposed project, including all of the drainage infrastructure repair, so the, and expansion. So the, the drainage expansion includes this rock channel, kind of following the property line, as well as extensions of existing drainage pipes. The rock channel will be meandering and include revegetation to make it appear more natural and to mitigate any, any visual impacts. As you can see from this image, the, which is a zoomed-in version of the image that you just saw, the limits of the emergency fill are kind of apparent by where the, the new grading stops, and the limits of the final grading are below. So again, the, the remedial grading and ravine restoration is just expanding on what has already occurred. Following the installation of the drainage repairs and expansion and the remedial grading, the project does require a restoration plan, which has been approved by state parks and was formulated with, in consultation with state parks. And the restoration plan has been submitted to the city already. As you can see here, the damage to the ravine and the erosion is severe, and the slope walls are very sheer, which was, again, why the ECDP was required. The code violations are listed here, and a couple have been recommended to remove and some allowed to remain. The unpermitted fill has already been removed, I believe, and we also recommend removal of the ravine stairs, the path and the gate within the PCH right-of-way, the shade structure with the steel poles, the stone arch in the required front yard setback, as well as the bluff top wall. We recommend to allow to remain the ravine top wall and the bluff top patio as they comply with current development standards. To go into a little bit more detail about that bluff top wall, what you're seeing here is the ocean side of the property on the left-hand side of your screen, and approximately 115 feet of the bluff top wall, or run, of the wall runs along the bluff. And that is constructed with a footing which requires a 50 to 100-foot setback. Right now, the wall is, I believe, between 3 to 15 feet from the bluff top. And at that inflection point where the patio is, the remainder of the wall is allowed to remain. You can see here, provided by the applicant, some photographs of the construction of the wall, including the concrete footing, and in the upper right-hand corner is the existing wall, as it is today. In summary, staff recommends the approval of CDP 13064, which is the follow-up to ECDP 18005, to deny the variances for, this is not related to this project, to deny the variances to allow the arch and the required front yard setback and the bluff top wall, and to approve the variance for the required remedial grading, as well as the demolition permit. I am available for any questions.
Good save. All right, thank you. Disclosures.
Visited the site today, or at least a, a view of the site, stopped at the La Piedra parking lot, took a look at it. I also spoke with Bonnie on the issue of the report from CalWest Geotechnical regarding removal of the wall, making things worse. And she explained to me that the city geologist did not feel that, or felt that, that the staff recommendation could be carried out without harming the bluff top. Apart from that, nothing that wasn't in the staff report.
Commissioner Hill. Visited the site with Commissioner Euring, number of things. The applicant conceded that the grading for the temporary road over on the side, on, on the state side, is likely not included in the total grading numbers. That would be good to confirm when we get to it, that that area is to be restored, and so we have no numbers on what additional truck trips or any extra fill or that would happen over there. I spoke with Councilmember Pearson, who grew up a couple houses away from that ravine and, and spent his childhood playing in it. And he said that he and his buddies found numerous arrowheads and projectile points in that, in that canyon. Combined with the known sites about 1,000 feet in either direction that have human habitations and burials, it's likely that that illegal fill went in over some kind of site there. There's, I don't know that there's anything that can be done about that now. Was, I was told, and this, this may get to a question, but I was told that the wall was integral with its footing through the use of rebar and concrete, but then looking back at the photographs, some of which you just showed, a couple ones back, it showed that they poured the footing, there you go. On the upper left, for example, they poured the footing first, and if you look closely, there are no vertical rebar members that you would typically have to be tying in the footer with the wall, suggesting that the wall is just resting on top of the footing without any substantial linkage between the two, which would suggest that it might be. One option would be in the wall removal, on the bluff side, for example, to take off the actual wall, but leave the footing in at ground level, so as to not to just disturb the slope any further. We were told that Caltrans had some liability for erode, for creating the erosion in the first place. The way the drainage was working under the highway caused, I think they described it as a jet that undermined the portion of the site up closer to the highway. But I, I didn't see any documentation of that offered, or any discussion of Caltrans liability about that, so I'm not really sure what, what to be thinking of that comment. And then I guess I have a few other questions, but this was disclosures, so. Commissioner Mazza?
I did talk to Lucille Keller, who lives right across the highway, within 1,000 feet. And she, she called about the original CDP. I asked her to put it in writing. She said that she was having computer program problems, so she would try. She did send us an email. And she quoted part of the original CDP. She also stated that her blue, or her whitewater view is now gone when it was protected in the original CDP.
Okay, as Commissioner Hill mentioned, he and I visited the site. We got a good thorough walkthrough around the whole property. Had a discussion about each of the items, those that were being, you know, unpermitted in, in the ravine. But again, nothing that was really not covered in the staff report in some way, so that was good. All right. We have. Anyone, they want to do, I got some speakers, you want to do questions as staff first?
Just want to do one question.
One question, go ahead.
Reading this, it seems like a horror story over many, many years. And we have all these settlements and this and that. Are, are those, have those been cleared up? Have there been any fines? Are there any outstanding violations that are, are there?
All of the violations are currently outstanding. All of the previous projects will be resolved with this project. You had another question about. Oh, any fines, yeah, there are outstanding funds due as well. And code enforcement staff has communicated with the applicant and the property owner about, about all of that.
Okay, and then, and then. We didn't get a copy of the original CDP, but I assume that one of them told there's violations of that also?
Yes, the correspondence, correspondence that you received, I had also received a call from that neighbor as well. And the applicant is, and the property owner are aware of that additional violation of the vegetation along PCH. The original CDP only allowed vegetation adjacent to PCH to be two feet tall. So they're, they're aware of that issue as well. And there is a condition included in the resolution specifying that all conditions of the original CDP must be adhered to specifically that one, and that one is mentioned directly.
Okay, and then, actually, just, this is it. There's, there was obviously riparian habitat that got buried, according to the report. Have there been, is there, I couldn't find it in there, is there remed, is there a fine or you can remediate it by giving money to the MRCA or buying land or something? Is any of that included in this, or is that just under the pile?
Yes, there's a restoration plan that has been submitted. It is under review with the city biologist, and this project did go to the ERB as well. That restoration plan has been worked on in consultation with state parks, as well as the variety of other agencies that have some amount of jurisdiction over this project area. And it's, I believe, a five-year monitoring plan, and it includes restoring the ESHA to the satisfaction of state parks.
But that's not part of this resolution?
It is in that there is a condition requiring that restoration plan, and some details about the plan, including that it is approved by state parks. The rest, restoration plan itself wasn't reviewed in time to include in the staff report.
Thank you.
Two quick ones. You, you said that they, after the agreement between the city and the applicant, in 2013, they, they submitted a plan to start this process? Is that, what took it from 2013 till now? I mean, why did it take so long to get something to find? Is that a good question?
Well, so there, there was actually two CDPs submitted, one in 2011, and I believe an ECDP that was withdrawn as well, sometime in there, maybe closer to the slope failure. And then the, this CDP was submitted afterwards to deal specifically with the ravine restoration, I think, in an effort to get that ta, taken care of more quickly. And by the time we got here, we decided to just combine everything into one project.
Okay, it's been a long time coming. And you're, I want to get to this answer when we get closer to the end of this thing, but what is the leverage we have now? It's going to guarantee us whatever we vote for is going to get done. All right, I mean, somehow we're going to have to answer that question, because this, I, I went through the, the agreement between the city and, you know, back in 2011, all right, where some of this stuff was supposed to be completed, and it hasn't, and he owes us money. So somehow we've got to make sure we're not doing this again five years from today, okay? Applicant.
I have a question.
You got a question?
Yeah. How wide is the grassy lawn in front of the house out to the, front of the bluff? Is that more than 100 feet?
The lawn on the ocean side is, well, the, from the edge of the house to the edge of the lawn is 111 feet. From the pool, from the edge of the pool to the farthest point of the lawn, I think is something like 64 feet.
So the, the patio is beyond 100 feet from the house, then?
The stone patio, that kind of.
Yeah.
Semi-circular one?
Yeah.
It is. No, I don't think it's 100 feet from, the, I don't think the edge of the patio is 100 feet from the house. I'd have to look at it, but I don't think so.
Because I'm just getting towards the notion of if, if we were leaning towards the staff recommendation of removal of the stuff on the front bluff there, whether the patio, if it were beyond the 100 feet where you'd be wanting to put native vegetation anyway, and I don't, I don't know about the, the rule of putting it.
It's the other direction, it's from the bluff to the patio, not from the house to the patio.
But I'm, but the 100 foot from the house outward for native vegetation, we're, we're beyond that. So I'm just wondering if that's, if that conditions the patio or not in any way? Okay, I guess we can go on.
Let's go, okay, we'll start with the applicant. Travis, on your team, you've got yourself, Leonard, right? And Ju, Mr. Holt, you've got a busy evening.
Good evening, commissioners.
Fifteen minutes, I believe, don't they? Yes, okay.
Thank you very much, I probably won't need all the 15 minutes. I'm going to add some color to the history that, that Justine provided. I think the staff report was obviously very thorough and, and covered many years and many iterations of things that have occurred. So I, you know, I think there's, a lot's been covered there, but I wanted to fill in the blanks on a few things and save some time for questions at the end. So my name is Travis Collin with Invicom Corporation, I'm the agent for the applicant on the project. I wanted to start by talking a little bit about the ravine history in terms of the, the efforts that we've undertaken to try to come up with the plan that you guys have in front of you today. I think there were, in about 2014, when, when we got involved with this, there's obviously some history that came before that, but the, the city and state parks and, and the project team got together and recognized that the, that there was a lot of things to balance at that point in time, in terms of making sure that we have the right plan for this, because it's, it's, it's a ravine, it leads down to the beach, we've got a lot of water coming off the hillside, we're on state parks lands, this is, it's a complicated situation. And, and, and to boot, we have Department of Fish and Wildlife, Army Corps of Engineers, and Regional Water Quality Control Board jurisdiction coming down through the ravine as well. So we spent about a six-month process embarking on studying the ravine with state parks, with Suzanne Good, with Cindy Wallach, the hydrologist from state parks from Northern California that they brought down to, to study, to try to come up with something that they could live with. We had to, we had to control the water coming down, we had to find a way to release the water at the bottom of the canyon, as, as high up the canyon as it could be, far enough down to where we could release, slow it down, release it at a point where it was as close to the natural velocity as, as possible. And that was the water that was coming out of the Caltrans pipe. We also had to control the water that was coming off of PCH, which is in a smaller pipe, and that's what the surface drainage, or, or rock line drainage is. We had to add some meanders to that, we had added some flat spots in the benches, really try to make it as natural a design as, as we could. And in the end, I think, you know, the, the design is, is much better for having gone through that process. Once we went through that process with state parks, that was really driven primarily with them, we met with the city. I felt like we're getting some traction on, on the changes, the design we had. And at that point in time, we started a process of obtaining the permits from, or at least consulting with the Department of Fish and Wildlife, the Army Corps of Engineers, and the Regional Water Quality Control Board. And at that point, we were getting good feedback, understanding their concerns. They did confirm they had jurisdiction. And in the oncoming years after that, we did obtain a stream bed alteration agreement, a 404 Army Corps permit, and a 401 regional board water quality certification. There was a mitigation plan for the permits that was primarily driven by the Department of Fish and Wildlife, because they had the largest jurisdiction. That mitigation plan addressed two things. One, it addressed the revegetation of the, the. One, it addressed the revegetation of the temporarily disturbed areas on the, on the property, which is the area that will be graded and recontoured. In addition to that, there was a in-lu fee agreement with the Mountains Restoration Trust that was entered into. The funds have been paid, the restoration has been initiated, and that work is, is being done in the Malibu Creek watershed. That was, through that process, we really arrived at the design that we have now. We can have continued to, we'd continued through 2017, 2018, working with the city to, to move this process forward. At the end of last year, we, we were hoping to get through the, the full CDP, and that didn't happen. We kind of ran out of time, and the planning department was able to help us out with the ECDP, which was very helpful, and we jumped on it and got the, uh, the work that has been done in place now. To, to clarify for Commissioner Hill, the, the grading quantities that have been placed on the, the temporary disturbed area on state parks land is a part of the eighteen thousand cubic yards. That is the last piece of dirt that will be pushed into the ravine as we're cleaning up. So that, there won't be a need to remove that dirt in terms of an export and haul it off the site, it will be in the ravine, and it is counted within those quantities, which has been confirmed by the civil engineer. You know, the variance for this, for this, for the ravine project is for exceeding fifteen thousand cubic yards. At the time we first started, we're looking at this with, with state parks and, and the city, we spent a lot of time looking at options, alternatives, to try to figure out whether we could do soldier piles, whether there could be a series of walls constructed. And with all of the options or alternatives that we looked at, there was, the, the slope was so steep, and there was such a narrow area to work with, we couldn't get a drill rig in to be able to, to drill what would have been ninety-foot tall soldier piles that were five foot wide in diameter. In the series of walls, again, the stability was, was, was difficult, and it was a tall area that, in the end, it only saved a small amount of, of cubic yardage, and using the traditional buttress fill, which this plan represents, it was really a far superior option that allowed us to revegetate the slopes, create more of a contour grading, it wasn't going to be visible from the eastbound side of Pacific Coast Highway. And I believe state parks, the city, and, and everybody agreed that that was, that the, just the traditional fill with the, with the comprehensive revegetation was the preferable alternative. To talk now about some of the other aspects of the, of the project, so we, you know, as we filed the CDP, it was really about the ravine restoration and removal of the, of the stairs that had been constructed down into the ravine. The stairs will be, the stairs will be removed, they were originally, there was potentially a condition about having them removed prior to issuance of the grading permit, but as we've talked with the city geologists, it's really easier and integral to just as we're finishing up the grading, to have the heavy equipment in there and just to be able to tear the stairs out. So, uh, with regard to the, the steel poles that were mentioned, the steel poles will definitely, will be removed, there's no issue with that. There's a mention of a path and gate in the Caltrans right-of-way. Our understanding is that the city's concern with regard to that is that there isn't a right-of-way encroachment permit for that. We're currently working with Caltrans to have that included into the encroachment permit, so hopefully we get that added. I didn't, I don't believe, as was indicated in our last meeting with staff on this, that there's necessarily any issue with the, the stairs and gate being there, as long as there is a right to be within the Caltrans right-of-way. The archway, so the archway is, it's nine feet tall, it's seven, seven feet wide. You know, the concern is that it's, it exceeds the six-foot front yard setback requirement. Based upon its location, the top of the nine-foot archway is seven feet below PCH, it's not visible from PCH, and it's shrouded in some of the vegetation that's on the site, not the vegetation that is along PCH. Our request for the variance is that it's really just, it's a architectural element that's, that's built into the, the motor court at the front of the house, and our request for that variance is to allow for that, on the justification that it's, it's not visible and, and would not obstruct views. The patio, obviously, I believe we, as staff has indicated, that we'd like to retain that and that is allowable as it's outside of the fifteen-foot bluff setback. The garden wall, so the, the garden wall is, the concern from the applicant's perspective is that the, that removal of the garden wall is going to destabilize the slope. The applicant's geologist has looked at this and has met at the site with the city's geologist. I was not at that meeting, but they, I know, shared some concerns about that at time. We understand the issue that it is within, in the buffer, but I guess it's a, it is a, you know, a planning versus engineering dilemma of, of, you know, if we do remove that, are we going to destabilize the slope? So we would request the opportunity to preserve that if possible. I think that's the, the extent of my presentation for now, obviously I'm available to answer any questions.
Hey Travis, thank you very much.
Sure.
Questions, your questions, Jeff, you're just here for questions also, right? Okay. Norm.
He had to save his time.
Uh, how much, how much time did he have left?
I'm not part.
No, I know. He had five minutes left, okay, so he got five minutes for any rebuttal if, if he needed. Go ahead, Norm, sorry.
Initially, I was contacted with respect to this project prior to 2013, and I looked at it closely. Had Roy Brothers come out and look at the possibility of putting in soldier piles to protect the house to the east? And the response that I got was that the steepness of the slope would make it very, very dangerous for a drill rig to get in there and start drilling. If they hit a boulder and there was vibration, then the drill rig could go into the, into the canyon, into the gully. I'm a little frustrated with hearing what I'm hearing, but by the way, I, I think that what's being proposed here is a good alternative. But let's face it, this gully or ravine was about twice as deep as it would have normally been had Caltrans not directed all the water into a two-foot diameter corrugated steel pipe and drained it underneath PCH to this area. And then, when the fill that they put in in order to build Pacific Coast Highway, they didn't maintain that. It eroded over time and exposed approximately nine feet of that two-foot diameter corrugated steel pipe, which caused it to break off. And it directed the water into the slope of the house to the east, and as a consequence, that's where that steep slope came from. And if you look closely at it, and I was working with Tony Robinson of Geo-Technical, of, uh, Strategia Technical, he was the original geologist, the original hydrologist, the original soils engineer, Tony's got, and civil engineer, he's got five stamps and five licenses in the state of California. He said that that ravine was much, much deeper, it would never have been that deep had Caltrans not put the pipe under, directed all the water into it, and then built Pacific Coast Highway, which is roughly seventy-four feet of impermeable soil, or, I'm sorry, impermeable A.C., asphalt concrete, and, and drained it in there. So this guy is struggling to protect his house, he's trying to do it in the best way he can, and on comes Fish and Wildlife, that's an ESHA. Well, was it an ESHA before? Probably, legitimately, when it was about twenty feet higher and not all that soil washed away. One last thing, Caltrans did not put that fill in properly. So this, the work that they did required the removal of substantial amount of that fill and recompacted, consistent with today's standards. So, you know, I, I feel for these people, I think they're doing the right thing, and I've looked at this really hard, and it's a good plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Travis, anything else you'd like to add? Or we can go to the commissioner questions and just, okay? So that, anybody else like to speak on the subject? No? Okay, let me close public comment up to the table. Commissioners?
I have a question of Norm.
Norm, could I ask you a question? The last project we had had...
Yes, Commissioner.
...had a side yard cliff. This one's got a side yard cliff, and it's failing. And we were told, gee, the geologist guarantees it when he builds it. So that, when they built this house, did Tony Rollins guarantee it wasn't going to fall off? I mean, that's, that's what they're hired for, right?
Right.
Okay, now, you say that Caltrans caused this, but that was in 1930, wasn't it?
Now, you have to go back further than that. You have to go back to the eighteen hundreds and look at what was actually there before Caltrans built Pacific Coast Highway and built all the drainage facilities.
So my question is, this applicant did this in like nineteen, 2011, fifty, sixty, seventy years later. How does that have any bearing on, on where it was eleven years ago and, and what's happening now? I mean, granted, Caltrans could have done something wrong seventy years ago, but how does that have any bearing on him building a house there and doing what he did?
Well, the house was built a long, a long time ago, and this, the steepness of this slope and the failure of it happened after the house was built, and it's just a result of what Caltrans did. In terms of the piles, if you could have gotten a drill rig in, and if you could have put in your five-foot diameter piles ninety feet deep, that would have been a solution for, for the property owner to the east. It wasn't because it was too dangerous to be done, it couldn't be done.
Well, my question is, this house wasn't built in 1928, it was built in 2000 and something.
Yeah.
So why do you say it was done a long time, when the house was built? I mean, that's all happened.
What, what's the question?
The question is, this situation existed when that house was built.
No, not nearly, not nearly, not nearly to the extent that it is now and was in 2011.
So, let me suggest that if they want to go back and, and argue with Caltrans, they do that, it's going to be a long path, I think, but I don't think that's what we've got to deal with here tonight, I think we've got to focus on getting this...
I agree. What, what is, is, is.
Right.
It seems to me that, that we can kind of break this down, there's, there's, the restoration aspect that, 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 dealing with the gully is, is, I'm amazed that, that these guys have managed to get through the bureaucracies that they've managed to get through. And I'm loath to mess with the plan for fear that it's going to send it back to Fish and Wildlife or Army Corps of Engineers or whoever and cause further troubles.
And they got a letter from state parks, so state, I mean, they've been working with everybody pretty well.
Right. And the other aspect is, is the variances, the variance requests about retaining walls and the arch and all the rest of that stuff. I have no quarrel at all with the restoration plan, I do have a quarrel with, with the, with the remaining stuff. And, and let me say that, that I didn't get a chance to look at the nine-foot arch, but to me, it's irrelevant where it is. The, the fact that it's there, you know, that's not sufficient to allow for a variance. The fact that it was built and it can't be seen and all the rest of this stuff doesn't meet the statutory standards of what are required before you grant a variance. So in my mind, that, that has to go. I'm, I'm more or less in support of, of staff's recommendation with regard to the removal of the, of the walls on the bluff side, and I, it's also, unless I can be convinced otherwise, in support of their recommendation with regard to the walls on the garden side and the retention of the patio, but I'll, I'll hear from other people on, on that.
Travis, I have just one, one question real quick. If, if you, how long will it take you, let's just focus on the ravine repair. How long is it going to take you to get that done?
Eight weeks.
Eight weeks?
Yep.
Okay. Questions, guys, go ahead.
When, when you said that they're going to take the, the fill from the highway road and dump it in the ravine, is that because it's needed in the ravine, or that's the easy way to get rid of it?
No, it's, it's part of the plan, it's, it's needed, it's the last portion. So the slopes that are, that are on the plan range between two and four-to-one slopes, or primarily two-to-one slopes, because that's as steep as we can grade per the code. And then there's four-to-one in areas where we're either going across benches or, or tying in at the top of it to, to blend it back in. So the, the dirt that is on the state parks land is part of what was always planned to be in the ravine, there's a membrane that was placed underneath it so that we know exactly where the, where the contact point is to get it back to natural grade, because state parks stipulated that we, we need to restore to the natural contours as well as the vegetation when we pull it up.
Okay. Justine, could you put up the picture of the, the aerial view of the drain that's in color? Can I see the pointer? Right there, that one. Now, what I'm trying to understand is, works, there it goes. Well, from the green area, where, from where it says limits of emergency fill, limits of final grading, why, why do you need to grade all the way down to the beach?
For two reasons. One, the, the slopes that are up there now are, are one and a half to one slopes, just straight down, because that's where we could get the, the temporary factor of safety on, for the, the grading, to be able to buttress where the, the slope failure was occurring closer up to the house.
Right, but my question is, why, when you get away from the house, why destroy a riparian habitat just to cover patio or something up there at the top?
It's partially driven by the gradient of the pipe that's coming down and the ability to, to put it into the, into the erosion box, I mean, the erosion box, the energy dissipator boxes at the, at the bottom of it, and to be able to release the water out. So part of what we were balancing was creating two-to-one slopes to be able to get the factor of safety we need and to, to buttress the slope, but then also blending that with trying to, to handle the water and, and control it down to the bottom and release it in a, in a slowed-down, in a fashion to replicate the, the, the natural flow at that, at that point, which was something that state parks required.
Now, that's the drainage for all of Decker Canyon, right?
Encinal.
Encinal's a pretty big canyon. Do you have enough diameter of pipe to handle a, a good rain in Encinal Canyon? Or does it back up?
Leonard speak that he designed it.
Got to bear with my voice, my throat's a little sore. Leonard Liston, L.C. Engineering Group and Cal West. And just to bring clarity on a few items, the drainage from Encinal Canyon is quite a big watershed area, and it all funnels down to a basin on the land side of PCH and goes through a corrugated metal pipe, I think it's actually thirty inches, but, and it comes and shoots out of that, out of the slope. And then there's a, about a twelve-inch pipe that, that collects water on PCH that connects and shoots out as well. And it effectively works as nozzles, taking this water, this, that's collected from the other side of the highway, and, and outlets it into the, into this aurora in a very high velocity, which is why this has such acceleration, accelerated erosion and sediment that's been taken out of this canyon bottom, or this aurora bottom down to the ocean. And the, we spent a lot of time with all these agencies trying to find, trying to come up with all kinds of alternative options on how to provide stability of the house in PCH and also improve these drainage at the same time. And, and actually, I think Norm was the first guy that brought it to my office, but the reason that the emergency repair is where it is, is we wanted to get just enough fill in the, in the aurora to stabilize the slope, because if you ever, if you went out there, it was fifty or sixty feet and actually undermined the walkway inside the house. And so the house is in a very precarious position. So we, the first step of this, the first phase was just to get enough fill in the canyon, or in the aurora, to stabilize that slope and protect the house. And that pipe you see is actually temporary, that's just, that's just attached to the top of the slope, so we, we outlet the pipe further down... So we, we outlet the pipe further down beyond the house where, where it's not going to cause erosion to that slope. And the reason that the, the fill, when we're done, it comes down much further is because we brought the fill down far enough to where we could put an energy dissipator, which is buried below grade, so that we can collect that water, give it a chance to slow down a little bit. And then through the energy dissipator, it gets, it gets released in, not a sheet flow necessarily, but a very slow flow, so it, so it minimizes any erosion. And then we, these slopes, I, I think, Travis, are one-and-a-half-to-one. They're just temporary because our formal design is three-to-one and four-to-one. And we went through countless different designs on that trying to create sort of an undulating, undulating, sorry, undulating slope so it could be revegetated and kind of blend in and look as natural as possible. And which is why we also put this, this sort of a rock riprap, rock line channel on top to collect not only surface drainage, but a little bit of drainage from PCH as well to, to take that down there. So it was years of effort on our side and all the other agencies to finally come up with a solution that satisfied everybody. And this being the last step, I guess you would say, but satisfied everybody and provided the stability. Now, the stability from the city standards only goes to the limits of the house. We didn't attempt to try to make a 1.5 factor of safety down on the bluff. That's just an impossibility. We'd be filling all the way up to the top of the bluff. So we, we feel the level of the, the slope is partially dictated by our calculations that we worked with Christine and to make sure we had stability so the house would be protected. I think I may have even did the structural design on the house originally, I believe. I'm not positive about that, but I think I did. But I didn't have anything to do with the civil design, so I can't answer what, or the geotech. I can't answer what the thinking was as far as why this wasn't looked at a little deeper at the time that the house was permitted. But it is what it is now. And so we worked, you know, very diligently, again, for literally years, to come up with a solution that satisfied the, the requirements for the stability of the site, collects the drainage and outlets, and outlets it in a good manner. You know, whether the applicant decides to go to Caltrans for some restitution on that, that's a separate issue for us. We don't, we don't care about that. But, and then, you know, I just want to make one other thing. The, because I met with Christine out there when we talked about this little, I call it a C-wall. It's like a two-foot, two-foot by two-foot rock wall. It is grounded. And, and at first, and the applicant, the owner searched around and found those photographs showing that footing. And so we kind of went back and forth on that. I mean, you know, our, my, my suggestion was just leave it alone. Of course, I'm thinking like an engineer, you know, I just say, just leave it alone. If the, and it doesn't look, someone pointed out that there doesn't look like there's any rebar going up from the footing into the stem wall. So it could, you could just break the stem wall off, bury the footing. And that way, the, that way, the wall is not non-compliant. And we're not, because if we tried to take that, what Chris and I, Christine and I were talking about, if we tried to remove that foundation, we got to excavate that foundation and compact fill back in place, and we're right at the face of the bluff, that was, that was something I would say suggested that we shouldn't do because that could cause some superficial failures. If they just took the stem off and buried it, then wall's gone. And I think that would be a, a viable solution to that. So I don't know if there's anything, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions. And again, I did the geotech work. I did the civil work.
But it doesn't appear that anybody looked at, I guess there's a reason, but making the drain under the highway bigger. I mean, isn't it, the velocity come from the fact you take-
No. Well, the velocity certainly comes from slope and size of pipe. Except making the pipe underneath the, underneath the freeway, I mean, underneath PCH bigger wouldn't change the velocity. The velocity occurs when you, when you come out of the pipe and you start heading down the slope. So making a bigger pipe below, below, and I don't even know how you could do that, but making a bigger pipe below PCH, you still got an outlet, you got unconstrained outlet coming out on the slope. It's going to cause erosion. It's a sandy material. It's going to cause erosion. You have to have some way to collect that pipe. The right thing to do is to take the pipe down to where we have it. That way, it protects the State Park and its private property, no slopes. You don't get this accelerated erosion. And we outlet it through a dissipator. I mean, again, we spent years looking at every possible solution. And even for a moment, and I'll, I'll get off the thing here, we looked at the piles. I sized those. They were like five feet and 110 feet deep. It's impossible to put those things there. So, okay, I'm here to answer your question. Thanks.
John, it sounds like the dissipator resolves the velocity question.
No, I'm just wondering how you take a whole canyon and pump it through a 30-foot, 30-inch pipe?
Yeah.
And that pan canyon goes back, what, 10 miles?
It does, but the hy-
Isn't it the, it was the face of the canyon, remember? It was not, maybe it's not canyon.
And the hydrology, we have catch basins on the, on the, on the land side of PCH. They, the inlet, they're inlet-controlled. So that water can pond up on the north side of PCH, collect it, get those pipes. And once they're in the pipes, the pipes are flowing under pressure, but the pipes can carry it. So the pipes, the pipe has a capacity, it's flowing under pressure, which we design pipes today to not flow under pressure. It flows under pressure, but it has a capacity. We did a fairly, a very extensive hydrology report on this. Analyzed that whole tributary area, looked at all the catch basins, you know, showed that the water can, it gets collected, doesn't, it doesn't flood anything on the north side. It gets collected, it gets in that pipe. And then when it gets underneath PCH, we looked at that about sending it down and outletting at a place where we could build an energy dissipator and get it back to a somewhat sheet flow type condition.
Can I, can I jump in here and say, a, a quick question? I agree substantially with a lot of what Commissioner Jennings had said. And I, after a question or two, I'm ready to move on. Are we close?
Go. I've got a couple of questions, but I'm, I know Norm had it.
Yeah, with some amendment. The, the one question that just occurred to me tonight is, what, and one of you guys can probably answer this. What does the public see of the canyon, once it's done from the beach, when they're looking up? What, like, they're going to see the dissipator? And what is that going to look like from?
Dissipator's buried.
No, the dissipator is buried.
So they won't, there won't be any sort of?
They won't see any drainage devices. They'll see the rock, the rock thing, but that's it.
Right.
They don't see anything else.
I, I agree with what you've said about the restoration project and all the different agencies and everything. And it, it is what it is and it's done. So it seems to me that a lot of the discretion that we have at this point remains on the variances up above. And I would be inclined to move the staff recommendations with the following alterations or conditions, I guess. One would be that the, the retaining walls, the garden walls, they're calling them, be removed, but the footings remain because of the potential disturbance. That the patio be removed because it's within 15 feet of that bluff front. And it's also, I think, be in, into what should be the ash zone away from the house. So, and, and, and because it wasn't permitted in the first place. And that we accommodate the, the Keller comment about the front landscaping, that that all has to be restored back to normal. And I think, I think that's it in terms of, unless you have something more on that.
I'd like to, I'd like to make sure that the original CDP must be followed, that we don't just forget about it when we give a final. And for that reason, this, as far as I'm concerned, this is one of the worst things I've ever seen. I mean, the builder just basically disregarded everything. And, and the code compliance tried to comply and nothing happened. So I would like to add to that a $2 million bond, due in three years, if this project is not completed, period. Because this is, and, and I'm going to ask you a question. Can you finish this in three years if you're diligent?
It can get done in eight weeks.
Which, all of it or which component?
All of it. We're not imposing a fine. We're imposing a completion bond, just like a movie. We've, we see a project that's been going on for over a decade and, and total thumb-in-the-nose, settlement agreement's disregarded, payment's not made. And I don't see why we can't have a completion bond.
Sure. Commissioner Malsack, I have a couple of concerns with your proposed condition. Number one, you need to have a rational basis for whatever type of bond you would need to put in place. And we couldn't use it as some type of punishment or enforcement mechanism. That's left to the code. If you want to have some type of performance bond, it would need to be to secure sort of the safety of the work they're doing. So if there's a danger of they start some of the work that is going to leave a hazard to complete it, then you could require a reasonable bond to ensure that, you know, that it's left in a safe condition. That's usually how a performance bond's used in terms of an access road or things like that. If they're going to rip up the road, they need to put a bond down to ensure that it's completed. So.
Okay, then I would like to, if you-
Commissioner Malsack, can I interject something? Sorry to catch up the, in my conversations with the applicant about, about this, I've been working with him for five years now on this, trying to figure out. Because man, I, I see it, right? I mean, I'm working for him, but I understand that there's, there's a track record here. I mean, it's, you know, it's, and I, you know, I asked him, I said, what's, you know, how are we, how have we gotten to this point? Because obviously, there's been, you know, 2007, 2008, 2011. These, you have similar issues, you know, coming up. And there was kind of fits and starts as you go through it. But in, in 2011, I believe, is when the settlement agreement was, was entered into. And there was, there's two sides of the settlement agreement. There's things he needs to obviously clean up or anything, but he wanted to be able to, to finish the work. And from his perspective, I believe that it was the fact that he wasn't able to make progress on the ravine and get that secured, that he was kind of looking at all these things and trying to figure out, well, part of my settlement agreement was that, you know, I was going to remove certain things, but I was going to be able to move forward and get a CDP to, to move forward with that. I believe he has every intention of, of finishing this. And we're, we have the contractor on the ready to be able to move forward with the ravine. And I think that we're going to see the end of this. I think that he's, this has been a very costly process for him. It's been a lengthy one. And I think that he's, he's ready to have this done and be able to move on.
If you had $20 million to work with, how long would it take you to finish this?
Do I have to stop work on November 1st?
No. I just want years, not days or months.
He said he could do it eight months, eight, eight weeks.
Well, that's the, the ravine work could be done within that.
No, I just, I just want, I want to know when it's unreasonable for us to figure that, that you shined us on.
Well, so you're, you're asking for a, a question that says, okay, assuming this thing gets, we pass it tonight, we pass the ravine portion. Because that's, that's what you're going to focus on, okay? And let's assume that we can go through, you can give, we can give you the same thing we gave the guy earlier that said, you know, while it says November 1st, if it's not raining, the inspector's got the ability to extend that date. So you guys, if you just finish it up. In, in theory, you could get it done six to eight weeks. Is that it?
We could get the ravine done part, that, we've got a, the revegetation's going to take a little longer.
Yeah, but.
Okay, well, yeah, and, and I don't need to even have you work through the rainy season because it's probably pretty hairy down there in the rainy season. But I want to know two years from now, year, three years from now, that the trees have been cut down, the wall's gone, the patio's gone. Everything in the first CDP, which was given 15 years ago, has been complied with. And the city's been paid and it's all over with. Because what I'm going to propose is, we'll give you a CDP that ends on a certain date. And you tell me if I can't do this, that may not be extended. You're done. Because we can't sit here as a city and wait 13 years to have something that was ordered 13 years ago get done.
Plan directors advised me, there's already a very short expiration date on this permit, so they're going to have to come back for an extension. You can't constrain a future planning commission's ability to act. So you couldn't make it unextendable because of course, a CDP could be amended.
How long is it?
Six months, six months.
This is a six-month-
Right, Bonnie?
Yeah, we, we, condition number seven on page 11 says that the CDP shall expire if they have not commenced to the satisfaction of city code enforcement within six months, meaning they've got to get going and keep doing it.
Okay, then I'd like to add that, that you report to us that it's done. And the city got their money at the expiration of the CDP. Is that, is that something we can do, Trevor?
We need to be in here. Bonnie can, can just provide a report about the, about the progress at any point that you want.
Okay, and then let's, let's just go through, make sure we got everything.
Let me add a couple, just a couple of questions for. Import, you've got to import, what, 7,000 cubic yards of dirt or 8,000 cubic yards?
10,000.
10,000 cubic yards. So that, that gets us into what? Bouncing truck trips?
1,200 approximately.
1,200 truck trips, okay. There's, there, where's that dirt coming from?
Either from Oxnard or from downtown.
Okay. There, there was no traffic management requirement. I didn't think I saw that. And it seems to me with that kind of stuff coming down PCH, we ought to have some way, I don't know what a traffic management plan looks like, but somebody ought to really take a look to make sure we're not screwing up the highway.
We do have one. Caltrans required it of us.
You do? Okay. I didn't, I didn't see, wasn't, I didn't see it here anyways.
We typically have a construction management plan as a standard condition.
I, you know, when I looked, I didn't see it, but I just, I could have been, I could have missed it.
Have Trevor read back what we, he thinks we have?
Say what you got. I want to, I got one more I just want to cover. And that deals with, you got it? So it's, we got, we got a traffic manager. You're happy with whatever we got?
Is traffic management covered, Justine Dean?
Not, not by the city.
There's a condition, number 43, addresses construction management and requires, it says, "Construction management techniques, including minimizing the amount of equipment used simultaneously and increasing the distance between emission sources, shall be employed as feasible and appropriate. All trucks leaving the construction site shall adhere to the California Vehicle Code. In addition, construction vehicles shall be covered when necessary and their tires run stock."
My suggestion is this, like, I've, we've seen Caltrans construction plans, all right? It might be worth it. They got, if, Caltrans has got a plan, let somebody from the city take a look at it just to make sure there's, if there's something missing, we can pick it up before we start moving.
We have to remember, we have 40,000 trucks coming for the Broad Beach.
Yeah.
If it ever gets done. So we wouldn't want 62,000 at the same time.
All right. Second, second thing I just want-
Commissioner, can I clarify? So you, so it would be to add to condition 43 that a city approved, that, what is this though?
City gets to, least review the Caltrans plan that they came up with.
Right. And the Caltrans plan was, we, in the, for the emergency CDP grading that happened, there was 850 truck trips that happened. And during that process, we didn't have any complaints about the way it was handled, either by State Parks or, or Caltrans.
As long as we got a plan, that's all I'm-
Would it be, "Construction shall comply with a city-approved construction plan"? Would that, "Construction management plan"? Would that work, Chair hearing?
Say that again?
"Construction shall comply with a city-approved construction management plan"?
What do you think? Or city-reviewed construct, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're, you know, we're comfortable with the plan. I think it's, it's going to satisfy, our, our main concern is just making sure that-
At the process, let the city review it. If they got a major issue, they can raise it and go back. But I don't think we want to change.
Okay. We want to say city review.
City review, city review would be, I would like that, yes.
Okay.
The other, the second thing I want to change is, or suggest that we take a look at, is item number, or condition 33, clearing grading during rainy season extending from November 1st shall be prohibited. I'd like to do the same thing we did with the other applicant that says, you know, you get, in November 1st, if it ain't raining, the, whoever's, from the city's reviewing the project can say, keep going. So you got a chance to finish up what you got to finish up and get as far as you can.
That's in the second part of that, at the, that's kind of a two-paragraph condition. So I think you're covered.
"If grading operations are not completed before the rainy season begins, grading shall be halted and temporary measures put in place to minimize, unless the city determines the completion of grading will be more protective."
I got to read both paragraphs as I read these. I apologize.
Does that answer your concern?
That works, that's fine. That okay with you?
Yes.
Let me ask Justine a question. There was mention of a gate and a pathway. Is that being removed or are they putting it in?
No, the gate's going on.
Yes, that was recommended to be removed, although the applicant said they're working on getting an encroachment permit from Caltrans for that.
Where does it go?
It's right in between the house and PCH, right off of PCH in, in the right-of-way.
So it doesn't go down the ravine?
No.
Okay. So. Okay, so we got rid of the patio, we got rid of the.
So would I, do I read back what I have?
Yeah, I would, do the ravine stuff first, the stuff you came up with, just to make sure that we're all.
This is what I understand Commissioner Hill's motion to be, be staff's recommendation with the garden walls removed, but the footings remaining, the patio removed. And then restore the landscaping per the Keller condition? Do you, do we have something in there covering that already, Justine?
Yeah, yes, condition 26 addresses the vegetation and the original coastal development permit. And I think speaks to what Commissioner Hill was looking for as well.
So, so number two and three would not be necessary is, is what you're saying? They're already covered?
If they'd like to, I can read it or if you'd like to review it, but I think it's covered, yeah.
One, one definite change with the walls is we're saying we leave the footing there, but remove the upper wall.
So then you, the motion would be staff's recommendation, but the garden walls removed, but allowing the footings to remain. And then adding the language to the condition 43 saying, "Construction shall comply with a city-reviewed construction management plan."
And, and remove the patio.
Uh, the patio is, I think that's already a required condition.
The staff, staff report says kept the patio.
We want to remove it.
Is the patio discretionary if it doesn't have a footing?
It was built without permit. We don't know if it has a, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know if it has a foundation.
By LIP 10.4D, it doesn't matter if it has a foundation, if it's within 15 feet of the bluff edge.
Right, so in condition number two, there's a lot of bulleted items there. Under D is where it talks about removal of.
Path and gate.
I believe the patio is 15 feet up beyond, it's outside.
The patio wasn't permitted and as far as I'm concerned, we don't know how it was built.
Yeah, no, the patio is not in the original and I think we should.
The patio wasn't included in the original recommendation.
The patio, is it not under D number I there with grounded stack rock bluff and 295 square foot impermeable stone patio?
Justine, didn't you recommend that we, they keep the patio?
Yes, we did recommend that they keep the patio as it is believed that it was constructed without foundations.
Yeah, we think right, you know what I'm saying?
And is outside of the required 15 foot setback.
Thank you.
So then the, the proposal is then to alter the resolution to require the removal of the patio?
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry about that, I was reading too fast.
So then there's three changes, staff's recommendation with number one, the garden walls removed, but footings remain. Number two, the patio is required to be removed. And condition 43 is amended to add, "Construction shall comply with a city-reviewed construction management plan." Does that reflect your motion?
We don't need to require compliance with the original CDP.
With respect to the landscaping, that's already specifically included in condition 26.
What does it say?
It says adherence to all original conditions of approval included in CDP number four dash 01 dash 034 is required, including the following, and it quotes the condition that you were shown earlier today.
Is there, did you read the original CDP? Is there anything we're missing?
No, we reviewed it and I believe that everything has been covered.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Hill, is that, does my recitation reflect your motion?
Yes, yes, it does.
Okay, and I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second. Kathleen?
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jennings?
Yeah, I ordinarily wouldn't support the removal of the, of, of the patio and the parts that could otherwise be permitted, but I can also count to three, so yes.
Chair Earring?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's amazing, there's no penalty for, for building construction without a permit. I can't believe that everybody's coming up saying how hard it is to build in Malibu. I mean, it's.
There, there are penalties.
No, 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 if, if you build within code, there's no penalty, you have, you get permits.
You could be fined every day for having illegally permitted work.
Yeah, but are you?
That's.
Yeah, different story. Okay, moving along, guys, thank you very much.
With the fines we collect.
Yeah, last one, guys, let's keep moving. Five B, Jessica, this is coastal development permit number 18063, application for construction of a water well and storage tank. Lay it on us. Guys, hey, Norm, Norm? Got a staff report coming.
Actually, if I could just, I, I should have mentioned this earlier. I don't, and if I already have, I apologize, but I failed to mention that Jessica's been promoted to associate planner. Did I already say that to the planning commission?
That's why you got to do it three times tonight. Now this is your third. Okay, go ahead.
All right, the project you have before you tonight is for coastal development permit number 18063 at the property located at 32340 Pacific Coast Highway. Pictured here is the vicinity map and an aerial photograph of the property location. The water well is located to the northwest area of the property. Before you is the project description, which includes the drilling of an eight inch diameter, 300 to 800 foot deep landscaping irrigation well that will be lined with PVC or cerdo lock lining. The construction of a 550 gallon water storage tank, which shall not exceed 48 inches in height. A 60 foot, or 60 square foot concrete equipment pad, along with that equipment screening that shall not exceed six feet in height. Pictured here is the site plan. The water, the proposed water well and associated storage tank is circled here in red with the arrow pointing to that location. We have a more zoomed in portrait of the site plan. Following, I have some site photographs, which is looking toward the western area of the property. The proposed water well is outlined in that orange color. And in summary, we would like to adopt the resolution number 1954 approving coastal development permit 19, or 18063. We would also like to amend the resolution to reflect the following. I'm going to go ahead and read this word for word. The project site is not immediately adjacent to the beach and is surrounded by the other residentially developed lots. Vertical access to the beach is provided to the east at El Pascador State Beach Park. And then this is the part that's been changed. On August 30th, 2019, the Mountain Recreation Conservancy Authority, the MRCA, submitted correspondence noting that the property does have a lateral accents document recorded per CDP number A22080, which was accepted by the State Lands Commission in 2002. However, related to the construction activities for the water well and the water storage, she do not have the ability to interfere with the public's right to access the coast. Therefore, the project will not interfere with the public's rights to access the beach. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions as well as the applicant who is here tonight.
Jessica, thank you very much.
Question.
Disclosures?
None.
None.
None. Questions, John?
Question, uh, does that language satisfy the MRCA?
So satisfy the lawsuit for the, whatever it was.
This letter we got.
We didn't discuss this language specifically with MRCA. We just wanted to address what they identified as a, a recorded easement. We haven't had time to research any of that since we got this on Friday when City Hall was closed.
It's just a recital and Jessica's constructed it such that just saying that MRCA is asserting, submitted correspondence saying this. So it's, it's not, we're not making.
You guys think we're covered with that?
We're not making a decision about the easement in any case.
But is the easement on our map?
It is listed on the public access map.
I always ask this question on water wells. This is a, really a question for you. We require every applicant to prove they own the property. It's my understanding that every piece of land owned by Marblehead at any time it ever existed, which is basically every piece of land in Malibu, that water rights belong to Marblehead. So can we legally give a permit for somebody to tap into somebody else's property?
Isn't there a permitting authority that, that monitors and regulates these wells? And whether they're allowed to be?
LA County Health.
LA County, they, they do it for health and safety, right?
That is correct, public health and safety.
I'm talking about ownership.
So I, I think the Water District is responsible for managing that also. So if they're signing off that the, the rights are available here.
Correct, LA County Regional Water Board.
They have signed off.
If there's a dispute and Marblehead heirs want to come in and assert that no one can pump water out of Malibu, they can bring up civil action, but they've provided a, a basis that they're allowed to pump this, you know, pump the water out.
Some agency said it's free water?
I don't think it's free.
I mean, I just want to know who, who said it was free water?
It's approved by the LA County Health, they, they approved the work plan.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm, my question is, is that work plan that this well is done to the standards where you don't, you're not pumping up sewage? Instead of, the standard is, it's your water or their water?
Isn't there someone that has to, maybe, understood the question?
I think Commissioner Maza is concerned about the property rights associated with the water, not, because the health and safety aspect is covered by the LA County Health Department.
And I don't think we've ever, ever figured that out. So I think essentially, I know on my deed, it says Marblehead owns my water. And I could walk in here tomorrow in this circumstance and get a well. So is the city doing something that isn't, how you say, kosher or what?
How many wells in the city have we drilled?
Well, we get two or three a year.
Marblehead has never said anything.
Well, that doesn't mean they're not.
We have the same discussion every time a well comes up.
I know, and I never get an answer.
But you got to vote to deny it on the basis of the fact you don't know the answer?
I just want an answer someday.
We can, we can look into it more deeply if you'd like.
Okay, I'll ask this another day.
One, one wrinkle on that to look into also is, my water law is rusty from law school. But if, do you have to go straight down or if you're drilling on an angle at, under an adjacent property, is that, is the whole issue there?
Somebody else's water?
Well, that's, remember the movie There Shall Be Blood?
Yes.
Okay, and the guy said, I stuck a straw in the ground and I sucked out all your oil. Okay.
Can I get a motion?
Well, we have one and I second it.
Do we, do we open the public hearing?
No, no, yeah, go ahead.
I mean, you open public hearing, anybody, I don't have any speaker slips. Anybody like to speak on the subject? No, close the public hearing, go ahead.
Okay. This is, we're talking a depth of eight, 300 to 800 feet. Is there any issue or concern about saltwater intrusion?
Not that I'm aware of.
Do we, there is, there's no provision for that? We just might hit saltwater or not and we don't know?
There's a requirement that the applicant submit the hydro geological report, and that is the expert on that topic. So once that's submitted and reviewed, that's the review associated with that.
Okay.
And if they're dumb enough to water their, their lawn with saltwater.
Yeah, yeah, but and then this is a, an area of special biological significance. Has there been, or do we have any analysis of the toxicity of the drilling mud that will be used? And might that have an effect or not? Do we know?
Isn't this a regulated industry?
I should have asked this question earlier, it didn't occur to me, so.
Yeah, no, this is, it's not part of the review that the city does, but other agencies, I, I assume LA County Public Health would take in that, take that into account.
Okay, and this does not include new landscaping, but it does enable new landscaping potentially. In that regard, do we know if the site is configured to allow for additional drainage in future if, if that's what happens?
The application did not propose any new landscaping, so that was not assessed by staff.
Okay, and then finally, just two little busy work things. A couple of the permits, you're going to tell me they don't need to be filled out yet, but the, the county health well permit application is blank. And the county environmental health work plan is denied. Work plan denial.
If you go and look on. On the project plans in the, on page L1.1, there's also the attachment of the work plan approval.
Was that aft notes? And that's subsequent to the denial? I mean, I'll believe you, I just, I didn't see it.
Okay, come on up. Give us your name, you got to fill out a speaker slip, Gigi.
Good evening, Commissioners. First, they deny it until the city of Malibu approves it. So their initial procedure is to deny it until you guys approve it. So there's kind of a miscommunication there. So I had spoken to, her name is on the.
So we don't take a denial as being significant?
No, that's why they come back with one after they know that you guys approve it, you know, preliminarily, until this hearing happens. They say, okay, we will, you know, say it's approved until the city approves it. Then they give you the formal, and they do come out and they witness the drilling and the seals. I think her name is Melissa, she's been with the water program for a while. I've done five of the wells within two miles of this property. To answer somebody, your question about the water, the saltwater. At about 750 feet, just less than a half a mile away, they did hit saltwater. So they brought this, it back up another 100 feet and capped it there. And put a filter on it to, to take out so it didn't ruin the landscaping. And this client does not propose any landscaping. It's just a big lawn and there is some trees on the outside, but they have no interest in any future landscaping. It's one of three houses he owns within two miles.
Nonetheless, the saltwater would kill the lawn.
That's, yes.
Yeah, all right.
Okay.
Yep, all right.
I move stack for recommendation. All in favor?
I'll second it.
Second, second.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? Done, second, gonna get second? Okay, all in favor, we're out of here. Thank you for.